Morning, everyone. I will now call to order the regular meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. It is 9:00 AM, December 6, 2022. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Supervisor Friend?
Here.
Gunnery?
Here.
Abbott?
Here.
McPherson?
Here.
And Chair Koenig?
Here.
Thank you, Chair. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We begin with a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Is there any member of the board that would like to dedicate this moment of silence to anyone or anything? Seeing none, we'll just have a brief moment of silence. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and endlessness, for all.
CAO Palacios, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda today?
There are none, thank you.
All right. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent to the regular agenda? All right. Seeing none, before we begin public comment, I'll say that on our consent agenda today pursuant to Government Code, Section 54953, I'm announcing that this consent agenda includes item number 44, which is an action to advance the county council to the next step on the publicly posted salary schedule as recommended by the Board of Supervisors. We'll not take public comment. Any person may address the board during this public comment period. Speakers may not exceed two minutes in length. Individuals may speak only once during public comment. All public comments must be directed to an item listed on today's consent agenda, closed session agenda yet to be heard on regular agenda, or a topic not on the agenda but that is within the jurisdiction of the board. Board members will not take action or respond immediately to any public communication presented regarding topics not on the agenda but may choose to follow up later, either individually or on a subsequent Board of Supervisors agenda. Please proceed.
Good morning. My name is James Ewing Whitman. I'll say this is number two of eight. Wow, if we were playing a card game, I don't know when the last time four supervisors were here and present. It's nice to see all of you. Let's see, when the lockdown happened, what was that, March 23, 2020? The current president at the time declared a state of emergency, and this country became under the control of FEMA, a soft martial law. There's a lot of things that have happened. But when that started, the current medical officer supposedly in charge had a document where people were just supposed to sit quietly by and follow the rules. I think it was six pages. There was one page where it stated that if you were, let's say, a construction worker, emergency responder, were providing food and meals for the homeless. There are about five to seven things where I could actually just walk around and see what was going on. The infrastructure that started in this county the next day was crazy. And it proceeded to all kinds of electrical underground wells, lots of fiber optic installations. And now what we have is we have our sewage treatment plant all through the middle of town, basically up Soquel Drive. They're going to process the sewage. However, they legally think that they can do it, and they're going to push it into the water table. So what are the effects of that stuff? You guys have been promoting, not lately, but everybody just roll up their sleeve and take a shot. There's so much information that those shots are actually killing people and they're irrevocably harming them. So what's going to happen during the next scamdemic? There's a lot of other items to comment on today. That's why this is number two of eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman.
Hi, my name is Penny Ellis, and I'm here today in support of adopting Bill AB 626 in Santa Cruz County. AB 626 was voted into California law in 2019 and allows cooks to apply for a permit to legally prepare and sell meals from a home kitchen. This new business model is known as microenterprize home kitchen operations, or MICAs for short. And MICAs permit and regulate it through the Department of Environmental Health and must meet the same safety standards as any other food service facility. To date, 10 counties and the city of Berkeley have adopted the bill, and both Santa Clara and San Benito counties have voted to proceed with drafting ordinances, authorizing MICAs in their counties. Providing people with an affordable legal path of entry into the food service industry will create a sustainable, socially just food system that serves community and creates jobs that encourages good citizenship. We're asking the county to enact a two-year pilot program to test this out, and the timing for this really couldn't be better since the state of California recently approved $8 million in funding for 2023, starting in January, to assist counties with adopting the bill. We had conversations last October with Dr. Marilyn Underwood, the Department of Environmental Health Director, which resulted in her supporting a two-year pilot program. She also advised her staff before she departed Santa Cruz to support the bill. I plan personally to open a MICA to supplement my retirement. I live at the Boulder Creek Golf Course, and I already have a whole community up there that wants me to cook for them. As you know, Meals on Wheels and the Teen Kitchen projects are overwhelmed with the number of elderly people who are in need of nutritious meals. And AB 626 would create a flexible countywide food system that would help address the specific needs of communities.
Thank you, Ms. Allison.
I'd like to present the signatures to the supervisor. Here, I've got some.
Thank you.
Gary Richard Arnold, Supervisor's Chairman. There's a book out there that has over 2,000 pages in it, and a lot of it is from Italy. Your, the law requires 72 hours posting. The availability on your website, I was told today, has two different feeds. A lot of people that were trying to get this information were not able to get it. And of course, there's no time to go through 2,000 pages for the people here. So I ask any one of you supervisors that believes in the law and transparency that you postpone items, I think, 13 through 16, something like that, which has tons of information that affects everybody. It's real important. We see that Joseph Biden, according to a Wall Street Journal, said he loves the New World Order and those implementations. And he says, let's increase it, power the United Nations. There were thousands of local communities and regional governments that used to belong to Italy. They, those people in those areas have got to chop those down to there's only 46 listed. And of those 46, 38 are here in California because of the radical anti-sovereign citizen position that you put this state into. People have no idea that 30% of the land is going to be put aside. This is in addition to what the federal government already owns. There's all kinds of things that are going to hurt businesses. And, you know, it requires leveling of incomes, the open borders with millions, and the sanctuary cities putting a total burden on your people right now. And I ask you right now, please support the 72 hours access and push those elements to the next meeting because the public has no idea what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Good morning. My name is Bonnie Moore. I always have to do that here. This is actually going to be a really brief question because I didn't realize that the item I was going to speak to is number 46 on the consent agenda. And I am thinking that I should probably come back December 13th to speak to that issue. So have a wonderful day and carry on with your business.
Either way, you're welcome to speak to it now if you like.
Okay, I'll just make a couple of quick comments and then I'll come back on the 13th. I have tremendous concern over number 46, Michael Rockin, being reappointed to the Transit Board. I've had a lot of experience at the Transit Board. I'm a 30-year retired employee there. I was their union representative for many years. We had a strike in 2005. Unfortunately, what occurred at that time was the union had accepted a labor agreement, and Michael Rockin on the board and the chair at that time decided to reneg on that agreement, which forced the union out on strike. That is not a very good labor harmony process to move forward with. And 37 days of the community not having transportation service. The other issue that occurred, which was the most recent issue, which had to do with the Public Employee Relations Board allowing both the Transit District and the employees an ability to either mediate or have conversation about issues that are coming up where you can't come to an agreement at the time at the table or a time of discussion, including unfair labor practice charges, but mainly under negotiations. False information was provided by Director Rockin, who at this time sits on the Transit Board. It was a very difficult process to get through. We had to engage legislators out of Sacramento to come down and actually set the record straight as to what being under the Public Employees Relations Board actually consists of and how it doesn't impede the functioning of the Transit District. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I will be back on the 13th.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just, yeah, there are three nominees. It's a kind of unusual situation for the Metro Board. There's three people that are mentioned as nominees for that seat. That, and as she said, I just want to clarify for anybody who might be watching, we will make that, or I think we will make that decision next week. We will not be discussing that in this week, so.
Right. My understanding is that those nominations then become a regular agenda item at our next meeting where we actually choose someone to appoint to that seat.
Hi, my name is Linda Braz, and I'm here to speak in support of AB 626, the home cooking initiative that we're looking to have Santa Cruz County adopt. I used to live in Oakland, and I had a restaurant for eight years. As a retired person, I'd like to have some kind of work but not work on a daily basis. And being able to sell delicious home-cooked and healthy meals to my neighbors would be a wonderful thing. I don't think this is a competition that the, any restaurant would be worried about. It's on such a small scale, you really can't do that much from your home. And I think it adds a great deal to your community and building consensus and giving an opportunity to people who don't really have the opportunity to work outside their home to make some extra money. It's a fun thing to do, and it's something that I think would be a really wonderful thing to happen in Santa Cruz County. When I was at the farmer's market getting signatures, everybody that I spoke to thought it was the most wonderful thing, and I'm really hoping that it can happen, and I hope you guys can make it happen soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Braz.
Hi, good morning. My name is Catherine Lucas Damer. I'm also here in support of AB 626. I'd like to share my perspective today. It's rooted in 23 years in the hospitality industry. As a chef, a restaurant owner in Germany, and many years in executive management in multiple organizations here and abroad. I'm also the founder of Farmhouse Culture, a natural food business that became, that I grew into a national brand, and the author of a bestselling cookbook by the same name. One could say that life, that food is my life. And when AB 626 passed in California four years ago, I was absolutely delighted. I think I don't have enough time to express everything I wanted to express in my, what I'd written today, but I've first fell in love with home-based restaurants in Spain in the 90s, where in a small village outside of Barcelona, a mother-daughter team cooked one of the best meals I've ever had in my life. Mama was 98, and her 80-year-old daughter served us. It took three months to get a reservation there. I've eaten at home restaurants all over the world, and one in particular was in Mexico that I fell in love with, where I lived for a year. And I ate in this home restaurant one to two times a week. And I learned that they'd had this business for over 30 years. A mother-and-daughter team, again, they'd turn their living room into a restaurant every day for one delicious meal, five days a week. And it was a way to supplement their income. But more importantly, it was a great source of pride for them. It was a meaningful enterprise. And of course, they provided a valuable service to the community. If AB 626 is adopted in our county, I'll be one of the first applicants so that I can start a MICA in my home that I will call the Hearth Lab. There, I'll cook one delicious meal a week for the purpose of training others in an open-source model. How to do the same? I'm committed to our community successfully implementing a hyper-local food system that will enrich our daily lives while providing financial stability for many families. I really want to help people get it right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. I'd like to, my name is Eric Rodberg. I own a property on Bay Street, 1117 Bay Street, which is less than one block away from Baby Home Entry School. You probably know that Renee Goldar, who's a Santa Cruz City Council member, is also principal of that school. I'm here to address a serious public safety failing of the county's Animal Services Agency. Last Wednesday evening, a coyote was hit on the street right in front of my house. And my tenants called, or someone called 911. No one came out. My tenants bravely, the animal made it from the street into my front yard. They got a blanket, put the blanket over the animal. It was seriously injured. They called again in the morning. An animal control officer came over. By that time, the coyote had made its way underneath the front porch. Animal Control refused to do anything. And this is, this is at Bay and Seaside. It's right on the intersection. There's a very busy crosswalk that the students use. You know, I don't know if any of you saw the video of what happened in LA two days ago, but a two-year-old in a suburban LA development was taken down by a coyote. I had to, I went over there, I called animals, I called 911. They gave me the runaround. I said, I demanded to speak to his supervisor. The coyote was underneath my house at that time. I finally got through to animal, animal control, and they said, oh, we can't go under the house. That's against our insurance regulation. Well, I had to get that out of them. They said, we can't do it. And I said, why? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I said, this is unacceptable. This is a public danger. You've got a suffering animal that's a predator. We've got an elementary school less than a block away. Finally, they said, oh, well, I think Rebecca from Wildlife Emergency Services knows about it.
Thank you, Mr. Rodberg.
You know, this is really, really serious. And I know we've got only two minutes, but this is a big failing. If a kid had been hurt, or one of my tenants had been bitten, you guys would be liable. There'd be a lawsuit. So I don't.
Thank you.
Good morning, Becky Steinreiner. It's a pleasure to see as many of you here as are. I wish my supervisor were here, but thank you for being here with public this morning. I'm here to speak about Consent Agenda Item 22, which I wrote and asked be pulled from the consent agenda. This is the change to the County Fire Code. I didn't come November 15th and listen to this because I didn't know it was happening. This was hidden in with the building code changes that are listed in at first. And I looked at the recorded video. It was not even discussed. The planner, no fire official spoke. The planner said, oh, it's minor changes. That is not true. None of the road maintenance county service areas were notified of this. These changes will affect us. I live in CSA 33. We will be affected. Many people will, and we will not be able to meet these codes. I'm concerned that people don't know this has happened. The Central Fire District Board did not even see this. When I went to the Fire Department Advisory Commission on November 16th, they did not know. Chief, County Fire Chief Armstrong did not know that the definition of fire chief has been removed. There is no definition of fire official, but it is referenced many times in this document. I'm concerned that the strikeout underlying copy when accessed from the staff report has been broken throughout this period. How can we see what these changes are? I request that you please pull this portion of the item Consent 22 and bring it back to the people. I see that Fire Chief, Fire Marshal De Mars is here, but where is County Fire Chief Armstrong? He's not. I also want to just say on item 58, which.
Thank you.
And I didn't receive.
Hi, County Board of Supervisors. My name is Forrest Martinez McKinney.
Excuse me, sir. Could you just step a little closer to the mic?
Yes. My name is Forrest Martinez McKinney. I'm a lifelong Santa Cruz County rural resident and CZU fire victim. I'm here to address item number 22 about amending chapter, whatever. The code that you're going to adopt from the state standards, please do not approve this measure. It should be postponed until the board can present the true implications imposed on property owners and have a means to address what amounts to a taking of personal property by government regulation. This board has been presented with considerable problems of these new regulations for Santa Cruz County, for numerous Santa Cruz County residents. Your staff and county other planning departments have also addressed you. Yet the board has not addressed any of the significant impacts or inconsistencies that will be imposed on your constituents. I implore this board to stand with your residents and rebuke these onerous, if not impossible, state regulations. Stand up and say, no. We will not make it impossible for our residents to rebuild their homes if lost by calamity or any other misfortune. This board has not identified the numerous homes that cannot be rebuilt, if ever destroyed, condemned regardless of cause. Stand up and say, no. Santa Cruz County does not fit the one-size-fits-all box of regulations from the state. These regulations are impossible to meet, given the geological constraints of this county. How many dead-end roads are greater than half a mile? How many roads cannot meet a 16% grade? How many roads do not meet the minimum pull-out requirements? Well, you get the idea. It's your job to stand up and say no to the state and stand up for your residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Anyone else here in chambers wishes to speak? Seeing none, is anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Chair, we do have speakers on Zoom. Liam, your microphone is now available.
Thank you. My name is Liam McLaughlin. I'm with SEIU 521, also a resident of Santa Cruz County. I was here to speak out against the appointment of Mike Rockin and in favor of Daniel Dodge, understanding that that has been tabled till next week. I'll return next week to voice my opinion then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
David, your microphone is now available.
Yes, thank you. I understand that the board does not want to talk about these nominations today, but I still want to strongly object to the nomination of Jack Brown to the Metro Board. He has conflicts of interests. He is employed by the self-driving car industry, which is in direct competition with public transit. He owns property adjacent to the Santa Cruz branch line. His abusive online behavior has led to him being banned from multiple Facebook groups and online discussions. He has made it clear that he doesn't even use Metro. He doesn't understand the ADA features of our buses or requirements for paracres. He dismisses the utility of feeder buses for passenger rail service that is now under consideration by the RTC. I really think that you're just trying to not offend your fellow board member, Supervisor Koenig, by not removing this nomination. This man has no business even being considered for voting for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Caesar, your microphone is now available.
Yeah, good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. Cecilia Lada with the Monterey Bay Central Labor Council. And I'm also speaking in regards to the metro appointments. I'll be here this week and next week as well, but the transportation system across the United States post-COVID has faced many challenges. Our working families need to appoint leaders of the Metro Board that will focus on labor relations so we can work towards a more robust transportation system for our county. We ask that the Board of Supervisors not reappoint Michael Rockins and appoint a new voice, and in particular, focus on South Monterey County. Thank you. See you next week.
Thank you, Mr. Lada.
Call-in user one, your microphone is now available.
Marilyn Garrett, thanks to the integrity and information provided during public comments, advice worth taking for the board. And I call for you to restore the three-minute comments. I'm going to read as a small excerpt, it's all there's time for, from Weston A. Price Foundation, Wise Traditions Fall 2022 Issues that Pertain to a Counting. Survivor's Debate, which we have covered extensively in the Wise Traditions Earth Journal, is raging, showing up on blogs and websites throughout cyberspace. Those who are amazed at our stance that pathogenic viruses don't exist often ask, if it's not a virus that is making me sick, what could possibly be making me sick? We like the answer posted by Alex Eck, thewayforward.com, and that spell of W-A-Y-F-W-R-Z. I don't know. Maybe poor nutrition, herbicides, pesticides, stress, mold, perpetual fear, overuse of pharmaceuticals, poor sleep, poor gut health, heavy metals, toxic skin products, electromagnetic field exposure, dental procedures, toxic air fresheners, toxic cleaning products, lack of community, overuse of antibiotics, consumption of sugar, pasteurized inorganic dairy, fast food, processed food, refined grains, lack of time and nature, lack of exercise, poor detox pathways.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett.
Yes.
Jordan, your microphone is now available.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jordan Vasconas, and I'm a Santa Cruz Metro employee and also represent metro workers serving as their SAA chapter president. I'm speaking about Consent Agenda Number 46, reappointing Mike Rockin on Metro's Board of Directors. I'm here to speak out against his reappointment and in favor of appointing Daniel Dodge. I know this has been tabled for next week, and I will return then to deliver my message again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vasconas.
Susie, your microphone is now available.
Yes, hi. Thank you for listening, taking my call. I am speaking out against item number 22. I live on Last Chance Road, and we are, we're all victims of the CZU fire, and we don't need to be further victimized by regulations that make it impossible for us to get back into our homes. Most of us are older, and we are just trying to find ways to get back into our homes. And the items that the state has put into these regulations really do make it impossible. And I urge you, like Forrest said, just stand up and say no and defend the citizens of Santa Cruz County. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie.
Chair, we have no further speakers at this time.
Thank you, Clerk. Now I'll return to the board for action on the consent agenda. Any member of the board wish to comment on the agenda? Supervisor McPherson?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make on item number 35, the 2023 legislative priorities. I want to thank our CAO staff and especially Jason Hoppin for putting together our legislative priorities. The list really does reflect some of our most critical needs, as well as our collective values on environmental protection, fire recovery and prevention, and housing. I'm especially hopeful we can attract some legislative support for CSA 7 expansion, which is up in the valley. We'll be, it'll be a big project for the county, but one that will bring a great deal of benefits and for to our residents, businesses, and the watershed in particular. On item number 36, the Central Coast Community Energy Battery Storage, a really important issue. I'm very happy to see this partnership with 3CE move forward to do the feasibility studies for key county facilities. Battery storage has become an essential. Battery storage has become an essential, is very essential to keep the critical public facilities operating, giving the regular public safety power shut-off events we have had to endure. But battery storage is essential for California to do, use all of the solar we produce and must dump it when the sun goes down. So we need to store it. And so in general, we also need to be looking at siting, utility scale, battery storage facilities if we hope to increase our community's resiliency. It's very important, and I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with these feasibility studies. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor McPherson. Supervisor Kennedy?
Sure. So first I want to ask about item number 22, which is the update of the fire codes. And we've had some residents express concerns. I understand those concerns. What happens, I guess my question is for County Council, what happens if we don't adopt the state fire codes? My understanding is that we do have to adopt the state fire code, and we have to make findings where we depart from specific things in the state fire code. I'm not sure exactly what, you know, point by point, what it is that individual residents have concerns with. But if your board wants to, we could call staff up to address it and answer more specific questions around it.
Sure, I think that would be helpful. I think if there's, I see staff from the fire department and yeah, come on up.
My David Carlson with the Planning Department, and this is Chris Walters, Deputy Fire Marshal for Santa Cruz County. It's an overview of the process here. Every three years, the state updates the state fire code. The county is required to adopt the state fire code, and we are not allowed to adopt any less restrictive standards in the state codes. In this cycle, we are adopting all the same amendments that we have adopted in previous years, and there are no changes to the fire access road requirements. And it's unfortunate that misinformation has been spread around the county. Bill's process is not changing.
The so it is not changing.
Yeah, what's, what's happening is in the past, all the independent fire districts have adopted their own fire code. And what's happening this year is the county is adopting one universal fire code that all the fire districts will adopt by resolution. So the changes to the language in the fire code regarding the appeals boards is changing from to allow the appeals board to be each of the independent fire district boards, and it has been in the past.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, the regulations regarding access roads are actually not being updated at all in this?
They're not changing. They've been this way for better part of 20 years.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any further questions?
I do not. You gotta stop yelling out.
Please. Do you have anything further that you wanted to add, members of the?
They covered what I was gonna say.
Okay, thank you.
And then, I'm sorry, I just wanted to talk about one brief comment, which is on item number 38. There's funding, additional funding to increase the capacity for volunteers for the, for the different volunteer fire departments. And this has been something that's been asked for for a long time, and I want to appreciate that there is, that there is a new funding stream that will allow more people to participate in providing essential safety services in our, especially our rural areas.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy.
You bet.
Supervisor Caput?
Thank you. Just a comment on item 32. I'd like to welcome the appointment of Thomas Bros for reappointment to the Paharo Valley Water Management Agency Board of Directors. He's a great farmer in South County.
Thank you, Supervisor Caput. Any further comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just briefly on the legislative priorities appreciation for the county's work on that in regards to the care court proposal. I look forward to, as new legislation is being introduced to clean up, based on the initial pilot counties and their work this year, I look forward to our board taking a position to ensure that our needs are met, that it's going to be one of the largest and most complicated shifts of state mandates coming down that we face in quite some time, and funding is going to be probably the least of it. But we're definitely going to want to see pretty strong advocacy in the coming 12 months to ensure that we're ready for the 2024 deadline for our county to implement the care court. Just as a point of clarification, because I heard people using the language tabled on the metro appointments. All we're doing today is actually accepting nominations, and then the next meeting is the actual vote for the appointment. So there isn't a tabling, it's just a procedural process today to move forward Africans for actual consideration at the December 13th meeting. So there's no tabling, and it was totally appropriate for people to speak out today, and they did. But the actual vote on the appointment will occur at the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you for the clarification, Supervisor Friend. I'll just come on a couple of items. For item 58, the Freedom Campus Master Plan, I want to thank staff and our consultant for preparing this master plan. This Freedom Campus is one of our most important properties. It is owned by the county. I'm glad to see we're reserving a large part of the campus for affordable housing, which is much needed throughout the county and particularly in South County. It's really an incredible opportunity site and great work all around. On item 59, the repair to Glen Canyon Road from a failed culvert. The work itself happened quickly and efficiently. I want to thank Public Works staff for that. I was disturbed to read that our road fund reserves are projected to have a negative balance and hope we can find strategies to bring it to a positive balance in the future. Through all my comments, is there a motion?
Move that we move the consent agenda?
Second, Supervisor McPherson, second by Supervisor Friend, any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Friend?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
And Koenig?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Consent agenda is passed. We'll now proceed with our regular agenda, and we're going to begin with considering the issuance of a proclamation in support of Watsonville Community Hospital. I'll just introduce this item by saying that we really had an incredible effort throughout this year to save Watsonville Hospital and bring it into, to make it a public hospital. Losing this hospital would have just been devastating to the entire community. It really was not an issue just for South County. Because even today Dominican ER is stretched thin with, I think I saw as many as 199 patients in this, a day this past week. Wait times have been approaching six hours. And so you can only imagine that without Watsonville Hospital, even Dominican Hospital's ER would have been pushed to the breaking point. So really, we continue to look at the health systems in our county as a whole, and Watsonville is an integral part of that. So it's truly a team effort between staff here at the county, the city of Watsonville, Salud Parlante and Community Health, which began the Paharo Valley Healthcare District. And of course, this was the largest community fundraising effort in our county's history. Huge thanks go to Governor Gavin Newsom's administration and county and local partner staff who worked tirelessly to successfully preserve the hospital and the local healthcare safety net. And I just want to wish the best of luck to CEO Stephen Sawyer and his team. This is a huge turnaround effort yet to accomplish here, is that the work is not over, but we're confident they can do it. Any other member of the board wish to add comments? Supervisor McPherson?
Yeah, I repeat, I'd like to repeat everything you said. I was at the ceremony, the success ceremony that they had in Watsonville, and we didn't have a proclamation at that time available. So I think it's, we really do need to do this, especially with everybody in the county. As you said, it's the biggest fundraising efforts in this county that's been accomplished. But it really is, once again, for our CEO Carlos Palacios, the former city manager of Watsonville, who knows that area very well. The staff and community volunteers, people throughout Santa Cruz County who made this happen. And also want to acknowledge the tremendous support from State Senator John Laird and Assembly Member Robert Rivas, who I understand at the opening ceremony yesterday said that he's going to be taking over Speaker of the Assembly in June. But they, their efforts were just huge in pulling down state funding, and we wouldn't be there without their commitment. A tremendous effort by everybody in Santa Cruz County, much needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor McPherson. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yeah, I just want to add that my appreciation, both for the community that really stepped forward and the community foundation and everyone else, and our state representatives who did a great job, but also a recognition that while you're sort of trying to put the fire out, you're also trying to build a house that'll be lasting. And so you're trying to develop, county staff developing a business model in a complex is a generous word for our healthcare system right now, that is long-lasting and continue to serve the patients well. It is, you know, this is an area that we had expertise just sort of built into the county. And I want to appreciate all the county staff for both saving the hospital, but more importantly, coming up with a model that will serve, again, the entire county well, knock on wood, for a generation to come.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Caput?
Basically, you said what I was going to say. I've got to thank my fellow supervisors and county staff, Carlos Palacios, and everybody. There was a shot clock. We had to get it done by a certain date, and there was a lot of pressure. And everybody came through. And I want to thank John Laird and Robert Rivas for helping out with funding also. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Caput. Supervisor Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, the Watsonville Hospital had been so under-invested in and so taken advantage of by previous owners that all the work that was done was just to get back to the starting line. I mean, we were so far behind the starting line. The remarkable lifts that were done by Mr. Palacios, our state legislative delegation, the community, got us to the end of the beginning, and now the second part of the difficult journey begins of making a sustainable hospital that's worthy of the community that it serves throughout the, not just South County, but Northern Monterey County as well. And I think that we've got the right team in place, the right community investment in place, and the right mindset in place of this be a public ownership-based hospital. So this is just another element of investment in equity and programs and services and buildings in South County that this board is really, I mean, I would say, and I think that Supervisor Caput said it very well, has done more in the last five years than has probably been done in the last few generations down there. We've got a long way to go for the hospital's sustainability, but I'm much more confident now in its long-term viability than I would have been just a few years ago, just because of this commitment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Friend.
I want to just add Mark Stone, I want to thank him for himself also. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any member of the public like to speak on this item? Please approach the podium.
Good morning. Becky Steinbrenner, I'm a resident of rural Aptos. And yes, I think this has been a truly a great feat that this amount of money has been raised. As a resident of the new hospital district that will pay for it in the future, I have concerns about the future, the challenges. I have a concern about, I haven't seen a business plan yet. Nothing was presented to LAFCO, and I look forward to seeing that come true so that those taxpayers who, whose boundaries were clearly identified in Senator Laird's bill as the hospital assessment zone, we will understand how this will be run. Watsonville Hospital, in my family's opinion, has always been a better hospital. Our doctor has recommended we go there over Dominican because they have a much less, less of a problem with MRSA and their drug-resistant staph infections. So while they've been maybe under some hardship over ownership changes, they have done a fabulous job of treating people and giving quality care to those who could not afford it. So I hope that that level stays good. I am concerned about earlier reports that the existing nurses were very upset that almost all of the part-time positions were eliminated. Those nurses depend on part-time. It is a very stressful job. And a full-time does not fit into their schedules as much as a part-time. And they don't want to burn out. So I'm looking forward to seeing what comes forward, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it's going to be paid for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Steinbrenner.
Good morning, Stephen Sawyer, CEO of the hospital, and also Marcus Pimentel, one of our Board of Directors.
If you could just lift the mic a little bit, so we can all have a hear what you have to say. Is that better?
Yeah. I just want to start out and just say I have tremendous gratitude, tremendous gratitude. It is absolutely evident that if you all did not help and step in and work with our organization, we would not be present today. I think the public needs to understand that. You know, there are many hurdles to be overcome. And one of the most major is this body right here having complete commitment to our organization, the staff that's associated with it as well, and really assisting our organization. So I just want to thank you all. Once again, just full joy and gratitude in my heart. And, you know, on behalf of all the staff, physicians, et cetera, we believe exactly the same. I will remind the public that we are publicly owned, and we have our own board meetings. And we have, we have talked about our business plans at almost every single open session board meeting. So please dial in and listen to what we're doing. We're very excited about our future. We're very optimistic. We have plans in place. We're doing wonderful things from renegotiating with our partners. We're getting new revenues that we've never had before, which is very exciting. We're going to, we're not just going to cut our way to prosperity. We're going to actually grow. We're going to meet the expectations and needs of our community. We're committed to that. Our hearts in the right place, our minds in the right place. All the stars are aligned for us to be successful. I'm grateful for my teams, my leadership teams that are present. And once again, I'll end because I have 10 seconds. I'm overly grateful for our staff, our physicians. They stuck through it, but they went through this roller coaster and they came out on top. Thank you very much.
Thank you, CEO Sawyer.
Good morning, Board. Marcus Pimentel, your county budget manager, but also Board of Director with the new hospital district. Stephen Sawyer is right. It's unprecedented what we came through, and it's, we, our optimism is at its all-time high, looking out over the next five years, 10 years, 20 years. We're going to establish a legacy that goes for the next generations to come. And it was unprecedented to come out of a bankruptcy, face enclosure, massive debt, where there are no layoffs. And in fact, we made investment decisions and are expanding services. So I'm really proud of this county stepping forward in this leadership of your board. What was done was, as you said, Chair, was unprecedented in historical nature. This was not just a hospital in the community, this was a regional hospital that would have crashed the entire healthcare system. So I'm just really proud of what Carlos Palacios, as your CAO in this board and your leadership, and do have confidence in our board. Our board is consistent of physicians, former hospital CEOs. We have fish financial management, community leadership. We have a really diverse board and really excited about the collection of our board, and I'm more excited about the staff who are leading it. So thank you for your help and just support, and thank you to the community stepping behind us.
Thank you, Mr. Pimentel. I'm seeing no further comments here in chambers. Is anyone online?
We have no speakers online, Chair.
All right, then I'll return to the board. I just need a motion to issue the proclamation.
I'll move the recommended actions.
Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor McPherson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Friend?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Caput?
Aye.
McPherson?
And Koenig?
Aye.
This proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'm now free to issue this proclamation. Mr. Sawyer and Mr. Pimentel, anyone else who wants to join for a photo? Please join me.
Right.
All right, we'll now proceed to item eight, which is a proclamation for honoring Sean Saldivia, our assessor recorder on the occasion of his retirement. So, you know, I want to start by saying that Mr. Saldivia was the first department head to reach out to me when I took office and offer a tour of the assessor recorder's office. It just demonstrates, I think, his commitment to transparency and openness. And it's really the spirit, I think, with which he's run his department. He has been our assessor for the last 13 years and has worked in the assessor's office for 33 years. Incredible service to this community. And you know, he's done a great job of course cultivating leadership in his department as well. Excited to have Sherri Thomas as our next assessor. And of course, she's a shining star in her own right. But we also thank Sean for helping cultivate that leadership within his department. But I think people don't understand that sometimes assessors have to get out there in the field. And I think my favorite part of this proclamation is talking about how Sean, first of all, appraised every type of property in our county, including residential, commercial, agricultural boats, airplanes, trees and vines. So there is a lot more property than you'd think. And that Sean has traveled the county through rain and wind, dodging dogs, both large and small, successfully crossing streams in his county car most of the time in order to accurately value the remote corners of our county. So Sean, thank you so much for all your work. Of course, you also have overseen the digitization of the department, both in terms of digitizing all microfilm and records into user friendly computer format. And also implementing electronic recording within the assessor's department to provide a more efficient streamlining process for real property document recording. So a great legacy. And a deep gratitude to you for your service. Does any other member of the board wish to comment Supervisor Coonerty?
Sure, I just want to take a moment. Sean was always immediately responsive to my office on questions. And especially around CCU fire and other issues that we faced over the years. Also would I did feel like I need to note, I've known Sean's wife since we were in kindergarten together. And his son was a big buddy to my, to my son at school. And just the nicest, kindest people who really care about our community. And so I'm grateful for your work here. I'm also grateful for your work outside of this community.
Thank you Supervisor Coonerty Supervisor McPherson.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Sean on a distinguished career as well. And I appreciate the work you've done throughout the years. It's been to modernize and the documentation for the system, for the records and the department and all. And it's so important that property owners and members of the public have a way to search records quickly and have confidence in their accuracy. And you've done that. And it's been a changing world and with the state can do some things that have an impact on our our processes here, but you've always done just a fantastic job. You're recognized statewide as a top notch assessor. And so I bet I wish the best of luck to you and your family. And my office looks forward to working with your, your successor, just reelected Sherri Thomas. So welcome and thank you, Sean, for everything.
Thank you Supervisor McPherson. Supervisor Caput.
Thank you. I want to thank you and your whole staff. You've been doing a great job. And hopefully we'll hear. People ask me what I'm going to do in retirement. So we'll hear from you. How many years have you been here? Thanks a lot, Sean.
Thank you Supervisor Caput.
Supervisor Friend. If I may just briefly, Sean is really just one of the most, and I thought that Brian captured this well, but he's really just one of the most ethical above board. I mean, he's really a model for not just elected officials, but in particular the world that he's involved in. And you know, there have been challenges in that position throughout the state and throughout the country and talk about never having to worry about it under Sean's leadership. I mean, Sean, you really are a model person. You've done an outstanding job, not just in this role, but in general in the community. And I admired everything you've done professionally and personally. And so congratulations on your retirement.
Now open it for public comment.
Good morning. My name is Sherri Thomas and I've worked with Sean for almost 20 years. I feel I should share with you what it's actually like to work with Sean in the office. Although we've really tried to change this, Sean is one of the most calm, patient and even tempered persons I know. When things go wrong or mistakes are made, he doesn't overreact or cast blame. Like the time I told him that we had to ask the tax collector to reprint about 2,500 boat bills. He calmly asked what happened? How do we fix this? And how can we make sure it doesn't happen again? Sean has always had an open door policy where anyone could come to him with questions, concerns or problems. Very often, the most frequent visitor was me. He takes the time to listen, engage with everyone about their issue and provide guidance on how to proceed in certain situations. It sounds so simple and so easy. But as I'm discovering, it's actually very challenging to always be available to anyone for anything at any time, despite having all your own duties, projects and deadlines. The other thing is I've never heard Sean say, you're wrong, even when I am. He has the ability to teach you to think critically about your, what you're presenting. And so I see I have a timer, so I'm going to skip a bunch of stuff. Sean's leadership has been invaluable to the office during some of the most significant challenges that the office faces, such as the real estate market decline. And a new computer system in 2012. One of the things that Sean should be most proud of is the office culture and commitment to customer service that he has installed in all of our staff. Our jobs are not simply crunching numbers and coming up with values. We interact daily with the public by office, in office, by phone and in the field. Sean's leadership has taught us how to do this with professionalism and respect. I clearly remember my job interview with Sean. I am thankful that he took the chance on someone with no direct experience and hired me as an appraiser. Even back then, I knew that I wanted his job as chief deputy assessor. A fact I didn't actually share with him until he hired me for that job. Jump forward another 10 years. He is older and grayer, so am I. And I'm once again following in his footsteps to become the assessor recorder. A fact that I find slightly terrifying because very shortly I will not have him around to pester me, pester with endless questions. Sean, thank you for your mentorship and for believing in me from the very start. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to work with you for the past 20 years. I wish you a very happy retirement, spending time with your son and your family. Thank you. Congratulations you on a career as an exemplary public service. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Carol Sutherland. I'm the assistant recorder for the county. And I've worked, I'm honored to share some thoughts today in appreciation of Sean. I've worked alongside Sean for the last 13 years. Although I am happy for Sean and know that this is an exciting time for him. For me, it's a sad time that Sean is retiring. Maybe I didn't say it enough, but Sean, you have been a great boss to me and all our staff. Your calm, gracious and competent leadership are going to be missed. You have been a caring leader and always encouraged me and all the staff to be better public servants. By your example, you made us work harder because we wanted to do good for you, for our department and for the community that we serve. Thank you for your guidance and wisdom and for believing in me. Your trust and confidence in me helped me build my own confidence to who I am today. I will forever be grateful. Thank you for being a good person to all of us and showing us what it means to be a true boss in good times and in difficult times. I appreciate everything you've done for me and our department for all your contributions, not only to myself, but to every staff member in the assessor recorder's office. Thank you for teaching me not to sweat the small stuff, even when it came to budget prep. Thank you for these fun years. I will cherish all the great memories forever. On behalf of all your coworkers and staff, congratulations on your retirement. Enjoy it and make the most of it. You deserve it, Sean. Thank you.
Is there, was there anyone else online that? All right, yeah, please Sean, come up and share a few thoughts with us.
I'm so sorry, Chair. We actually do have one speaker online.
I stand corrected.
What do you know?
User with the Samsung S M. Your microphone's now available. Go ahead and accept the unmute. As a reminder, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself. They've taken their hand down.
Okay. I'm sure they're sending you the best for your retirement as well.
Correct. Well, first of all, thank you for all those, let me get this a little closer, for those kind words. I really appreciate it. And thank you for this proclamation. After 13 and a half years in office, I have so many people to thank. I'm just going to get right to it. I want to begin by thanking this board, all of you for your support over the years. I especially want to thank Supervisor Coonerty and Supervisor Caput. I know you'll be leaving us soon. You have one more meeting, I understand. But I do want to take this opportunity to thank you for your service and wish you both the best in the next chapter of your lives. I want to thank Carlos and his staff. He's an amazing staff. He's a wonderful leader. He's given our office a tremendous amount of support over the years. And I want to thank Carlos and thank you for helping, doing a wonderful job and saving our hospital as well. My friends and all the other departments, county council, thank you, Jason, personnel, Ajita, if you're listening. I S D, special thanks if he's listening. I hope he's not because I hope he has better things to do. But Kevin Bowling, thank you, Kevin. Our property tax system, that was, as he would often say, the heaviest lift of his career. It was a bear. We did it. Other counties now use the same system that we developed. So that's our legacy for the state. And it still works very well for us. So thank you, Kevin, and thank you, I S D. I believe I saw Edith back there, my special friend, Edith Driscoll. Edith and I, we control the first floor for you guys. We're always locked together. Edith and her staff, if there's any office that we work closest with, it's her staff, especially the folks in tax. There are folks in her department that I've known for 20 years. We have a great relationship and that really pays dividends when we just try to get stuff done. So after the C Z U fire together, our two departments were able to get, and basically it was Sherri, it wasn't me, but we were able to get relief out to those folks really quick. And so those kind of relationships have really helped me and have been beneficial for this county. Of course, I want and need to thank the staff of the assessor recorder's office. They're really not well known around the county. We're kind of alone down there sometimes on the first floor doing our own thing. But they're as dedicated and hardworking as anyone else who works at this wonderful place. So thank you to them. I'm going to miss them. I'm going to miss my management team sitting over here. We have Carol Sutherland who just spoke. Thank you, Carol. Claudia Cunha, many people know Claudia. She knows basically everything that's going on in the office all the time. And I couldn't have done anything without Claudia. And of course, Sherri Thomas, thank you for those kind words. Sherri, most people don't know, is pretty much running the show already. So she's definitely going to hit the, hit the ground running and she's going to do a great job. I'm happy for her. I'm happy for our office and I'm happy for this county that she's going to be the next and the first woman assessor in county history. So congratulations, Sherri. I also want to thank my wife, Nikki, my son Nicholas, for their patience and support over the years. I'm really happy to be retiring. It's, my son is 15 years old. He's a sophomore in high school. I love him to death and I'm going to spend the next two years being a stay at home dad with him. We're going to have a lot of adventures, I hope. I don't know how much he can handle me. He's 15, so it kind of changes day to day. But right now we have Fenway Park and Yankee Stadium on the top of our list. So we have some fun stuff to do. And finally, I want to thank the voters of this county. I was born and raised here for giving me the opportunity to serve as a assessor recorder. I very much appreciate that as well. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Sean. Now, if I could just get a motion to issue this proclamation.
I'd like to make motion that we recognize Sean Saldivian as a retirement as a county assessor.
Second. All right, motion by Supervisor McPherson, second by Supervisor Coonerty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Friend.
Aye.
Coonerty.
Aye.
Caput.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
And Koenig.
Aye.
This proclamation passes unanimously.
All right. All right, we will now proceed with item nine to consider approval and concept of ordinance adding chapter 2.17 to the Santa Cruz County Code to establish the office of the inspector general and schedule the ordinance for second reading and final adoption on December 13th, 2022, as outlined in the memorandum of the county administrative officer. And for a report on this item, we have our deputy C O, Melody Serino.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. The item before you today is the ordinance to codify the establishment of the office of the inspector general pursuant to Assembly Bill 1185. This office will be responsible for the monitoring, inspection and reporting on specified aspects of operations of the Santa Cruz Sheriff's Office. The purpose of the office is to help foster transparency and accountability, identify unmet needs and service gaps, encourage timely and serious consideration of complaints and provide independent review of serious incidents involving county personnel. Similar to the process we used when transitioning the public defender's office, we have been running parallel processes. The development of the ordinance and the conducting of the request for proposal process to find an independent third party to contract with to start the office. The ordinance allows for the overall authority and general rules governing the office of inspector general and ensures that incidents involving use of force, critical incidents and community complaints are investigated thoroughly, accurately and fairly. Specific scope of work items will be addressed in the contract with the independent vendor. The ordinance was informed by input from the community and includes things where there was community consensus, including subpoena power, the ability to investigate officer involved shootings and in custody deaths, the ability to accept anonymous complaints, the ability to audit things like sheriff's office policies, procedures. the ability to audit things like sheriff's office policies, procedures, and trainings, and of course, public engagement and community reporting. At this time, we request that you consider approval and concept of the ordinance and schedule the ordinance for a second reading on December 13th. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Deputy CAO Serena. Are there comments or questions for members of the board? Supervisor McPherson?
Not questions. I just want to thank you again and the CAO and the sheriff for working collaboratively to bring this proposal before the board for approval. I also want to thank the community for its input during this process. And it's my expectation that the Office of the Inspector General will work to deepen the trust and confidence our community has in our sheriff's office and work they do with the community. And this, it has, it has already been there and done that with the community service being recognized early on throughout the nation as one that's really dedicated to community service and input and cooperating with the other agencies as it has just recently through the Judicial Council. And perhaps Supervisor Friend can say more about that. But it has really worked well with other people and been a leading force to establish this trust and conference in our sheriff's department. So I appreciate the establishment of this office. I think it's well done and good luck.
Thank you, Supervisor McPherson. Supervisor Coonerty?
Just a quick note to thank Melody. She always gets the easy assignments at the county. And this is another example of where she engaged the community and came up with a thoughtful process and outcome that will benefit us for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Coonerty. Supervisor Friend?
Yeah, thank you. I'd also like to add my appreciation to Ms. Serena, who did not just a lot of community outreach, but the community not just felt heard, but it was clear that their feedback was directly incorporated into the elements that are before us today. And I think that that's, this was meant to be a community-driven process and it's having a community-driven outcome. I'd also like to thank Sheriff Hart, when, as Supervisor McPherson alluded to, when the Criminal Justice Council was looking at policies and procedures across the county, every agency, one of the issues that was raised was whether or not there was independent oversight or review of the agencies. At the time, Sheriff Hart immediately said that he'd be willing to initiate some sort of process to get independent oversight, and Inspector General is what we landed on. But even compared to some of the other local agencies, I mean, the sheriff's office was the first to really hop on the findings from the CJC's report last year and implement, actually during the process, a number of the findings. And then as far as the Inspector General goes, helped lead this process. I think a lot of the concerns that were raised a few meetings back from some members of the community about what the power of authority of the Inspector General have really been settled. This is a pretty broad-based scope of authority that the Inspector General has. And I think that that it'll satisfy not just the community needs, but also provide the sheriff's office that additional independent oversight that the sheriff's office was openly welcoming. And I think that if you look across the country, we should really look favorably upon how our local law enforcement's been so transparent and open and not just allowing for independent oversight, but a willingness to participate in these processes. That's not the case necessarily across the country. Sheriff Hart was one of the first to implement 21st century policing. He was the first in the state anyway to. And in regards to independent oversight, you know, we're also taking a lead, I think, with the scope of what the Inspector General will do. So appreciation of both the office also shows the value of the Criminal Justice Council. I appreciate Supervisor Capit had served on that for quite some time. And obviously, we'll have a new member coming forward. But there is a lot of value of bringing together all the various entities throughout the county in regards to ensuring that we have one of the best criminal justice systems around. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Friend.
I just want to say thank you. Did a great job.
All right, thank you. I have a couple terrifying questions to address some of the concerns I'd heard related to the ordinance. Does the Inspector General, with the way this ordinance is written, have the authority to independently initiate investigations?
Yes.
That was my read of it as well. I just heard some concerns that it was, you know, only the ability to audit current investigations that the sheriff's office is undertaking. But Inspector General clearly has the ability to independently initiate investigations. Okay. Another concern I heard was that the Inspector General would, could only issue a subpoena with the advice and approval of county council. Is there any reason why that could create a conflict of interest if county council also represents the sheriff?
No, we don't, we don't believe that is going to be a problem at all.
Okay.
We have, we have, we have a number of situations in our office where we have folks that, we have somebody who represents the Public Defender's Office, for example, and somebody who represents the District Attorney's Office, for example. So we have the fact that my office represents the sheriff's office and would separately, somebody separate from the sheriff's office lawyer would be representing the OIG.
What would a case be where you would not grant the Inspector General the ability to audit the sheriff or subpoena the sheriff?
No, I don't, I don't believe that's the intent of it all, to give my office discretion to do it. It's more of advising counsel in doing it and helping the OIG conduct the OIG's work.
Okay.
There would not be a situation that I can foresee where our office would ever stand in the way of a subpoena being issued. It's more of helping clarify what it is that you're looking for and how we can most efficiently obtain it.
Got it. Thanks. And then finally, I know this ordinance does say that the Inspector General will issue reports to the Board of Supervisors. Do we need to add something in here that says explicitly that those will be made public or can that be assumed?
So I guess we're assuming they're public because they would come forth to you as a regular agenda item, just like, just like any other agenda item. So they would be public reports. They'll also be posted on the website. Again, we're running these parallel processes. So in the RFP, one of the things that's required in the RFP is that the OIG keep a public website where they post reports.
All right, thank you. If there's no other comments or questions for members of the board, I'll open it to members of the public.
Many thanks, Chair. Good morning. I'm Reverend Beverly Brook, and I'm a little confused because I read the ordinance and what I see in it isn't what Ms. Serena just shared. So I am encouraging the board to take a pause in approving that ordinance in order to make sure the oversight ordinance is crafted with intention and is designed in line with best practices. Specifically, that the ordinance include the components that the community raised overwhelmingly at the series of meetings leading up to the crafting of the RFP. One, the ability to conduct independent investigations on the, by the Office of Inspector General on their own initiative. Two, the ability to issue subpoena without permission from another county agency. Three, seeking community input around priority areas. Four, reporting out to the community on findings and reports generated. And I understand what you're saying, Ms. Serena, but not everybody has access to coming to the board or listening to the board. So making sure that that transparency is available to all of our community. And five, a civilian oversight commission. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Reverend Brook.
Thank you. My name is Becky Steinbrenner, resident of rural Santa Cruz County. Would like to support what this lady has just said. I support law enforcement. They do a hard job. And right now, it's a real challenge for them to do their jobs because after the protest, the Black Lives Matter thing, they, you know what I'm saying. It's very hard. They don't have the level of respect that they really demand from many people. So I want to support them, but I also recognize that there are instances of abuse and problems. And so we've got to really use this as an opportunity to regain the public's trust and respect that was unfortunately lost with all of the protests nationwide. And part of that is going to be with this office having a lot of civilian oversight and involvement. So I also feel that it is not appropriate that the Inspector General has to get permission from county council to do anything. This is reminding me of the county's whistleblower program in which if a person wants to submit a complaint or problem, we do, and it goes back to the person that we're complaining about or trying to get help to address. Of course, they're going to say, there's no problem. I worry that county council will say, there's no problem. So I support what the previous speaker said, that there is no requirement that there is permission granted from county council for an inspector general to investigate, to subpoena, and to make the findings public. I also remember Supervisor McPherson, you wanted something about the investigation automatically included of the deaths in the jails. I'm not sure, but I seem to.
My name is Lee Brokaw. I'm on the Board of Directors of the ACLU, Santa Cruz County, and Chairman of the Police Accountability and Transparency Committee, also a member of the Santa Cruz Sheriff's Oversight Committee. I participated in all of these community meetings. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I would like to call your attention to 2.17.040, Section C. If the OIG deems necessary to issue a subpoena to obtain required information and force provisions, it may prepare a subpoena with the advice and approval of county council. It's a mother may I situation as written, and that's not appropriate. My remarks today, I want to remind you folks that you're creating a law. And you should be creating this law for the worst-case scenario, because that's what laws are. They give you an independent judge of the actions of the individual. Zach Friend's praise of the sheriff is immaterial to this ordinance. The fact that any or all of you may think that Sheriff Hart is a friendly person and you want to go easy on him, that is irrelevant. You should be doing this ordinance for the worst-case sheriff that the electorate gives you to work with because you need to have a ladder by which you can, you can judge. I will tell you that in AB 481, the sheriff disingenuously left out his 83 assault weapons when he made his report to this board. And this board made no effort whatsoever to find out, even though I stood here and told you what he was doing, made no effort whatsoever to find out whether he had 83 assault weapons. This is the kind of malfeasance on the part of a sheriff that would be covered under this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Brokaw.
From the sheriff's standpoint, people's opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board today. My name's Jonathan Gettleman. And I appreciate the efforts of this board to engage in the politically and technically challenging process of creating this position. What the Santa Cruz Oversight Commission is asking right now is that the board pause and study this issue a little bit more thoroughly as board members yourself and reflect on the needs and demands of your constituents. This ordinance fails to incorporate most principles and practices demanded by the community and reflected in your own agenda notes for November 18th that the community desired, including nationally-recognized best practices, real community involvement, adequate funding, and powers independent from the overseen agency. Putting all that aside, this ordinance fails, as presently written, fails in its most basic fundamental purpose to create an independent investigative oversight structure. Also, this ordinance builds in a structural conflict of interest with the county council. In 2021, the grand jury report detailed a host of murders, deaths, and other issues in our jail and demanded independent oversight pursuant to AB 1185, either through a civilian oversight board or both, or an OIG. This is an auditor. It investigates the sheriff's own investigations. The auditor, even under circumstance, the deaths of the hands of a sheriff, is not empowered to conduct independent investigations without express permission from the sheriff when any sheriff agent is involved. It's written directly in there. It's also such that the interesting position where the auditor has to ask permission for a subpoena from the sheriff's own attorney, which is problematic. So we ask that you take a pause, study the ordinance, and please try to come up with something that imbues the auditor with true independence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gettleman.
Morning again. My name is James Ewing Whitman. Seems like this Office of Inspector General has been discussed many other times. I can recall several other meetings where many other citizens came in and said, hey, the citizens want to be a part of this. And it was decided that this was going to be an independent situation. I personally asked the current sheriff, Jim Hart, are these, are these individuals that are going to be part of the Inspector General? Are they even going to reside on this continent? So is this another layer of accountability? Is this another layer of immunity? Is this another layer of transparency? I don't know. It seems like time will tell. But without law enforcement, there are no laws. And I'm just not really sure. I haven't completely read what's in this document. But it is up to citizens to ask questions and to be part of the system and not just to maybe blindly accept. So anyway, this is quite an interesting dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman. Seeing no one else here in chambers, is there anyone online?
Yes, Chair, we do have speakers online. Live Oak Resident, your microphone is now available. They've taken their hand down. One moment. Peter, your microphone is now available.
Thank you. This is Peter Gelblum, resident of Boulder Creek. I second the comments made by Mr. Brokaw and Reverend Brook and Mr. Gettleman. And have just, I want to focus on one thing. Supervisor Koenig asked Ms. Serena whether the OIG would be able to conduct independent investigations, and she just flat out said yes. If you look at the statute, then please look at the ordinance itself, not just the staff report. Section 2.17.040(c) four and five allow the OIG only to monitor and review sheriff's office investigations, not to conduct their own independent investigations. The only part in the ordinance, in the proposed ordinance, that would allow the OIG to conduct its own independent investigations is 2.17.040(c)(8). And it can do that only when requested by or with the authorization of the sheriff himself. I urge you to please renew your question to county council and/or Ms. Serena to point to the specific language in the ordinance that allows the OIG to conduct independent investigations. Obviously, it's not an independent investigation if it needs the authorization of the sheriff. Thank you very much. And please, I really urge you to ask those questions before you vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gelblum.
Keith, your microphone is now available.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Chairman Koenig, members of the board, I'm Keith Lazar from Supervisorial District 2. And I share the concerns that this ordinance is drafted for a sheriff for whom we have great respect and not as it should be for the future, like Mr. Gelblum. Like Mr. Gelblum, I did not see in reviewing this ordinance where the inspector general really had independent power. And in looking under responsibilities and duties subsection C, what it talks about is the power of the inspector general to review, monitor and view, review investigations of incidents rather. So it uses that language rather than giving the inspector general independent power. I was pleased to see that in the section concerning complaints that an attempt had been made to respond to my suggestion that the word shall should be replaced with may by adding that referral to the sheriff's office or referral to the chief deputy of the jail should only be done with consent of the complainant. But that then leaves us with the quandary that what happens if the claim complaint says, I do not want to grant that permission because the inspector general has no power, as I read it, under this ordinance. Again, with respect to county council's comment that there is no insistence on their approval, I would suggest just adding one word, approval or two, as to Form Three would solve a problem there. So please take the time to draft the ordinance correctly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lusar.
We have no further speakers for this item, Chair.
All right, then I'll return to the board for deliberation and action. I'll move the recommended action. I'll second. Right, motion by Supervisor Kennedy, second by Supervisor Friend. Is there any further discussion? And I'll just add that, of course, not only is it our intent to create an ordinance and an office inspector general that has the powers to independently investigate as, and is fully transparent as described and desired by the community. The way I see it in this ordinance, the fact that under, uh, let's see, 2.17030 duties see to the maximum extent allowed by law, the OIG will be responsible for, just starting at the top. One, monitoring the sheriff's law enforcement and jail operations, commissions and confinement in the jail, provision of health services in the jails, et cetera. I mean, the way I read it, monitoring could certainly include an investigation. Is there anything that I'm, uh, missing here? And maybe I would ask county council, is this the same language that you would point to? The fact that the OIG would have independent investigative powers?
Yeah, it's, it's the same, you're quote, you're, you're, you're reading off the same language. And I agree with you that, um, that it's, it, it was the intent of staff to bring your board what your board asked for. And we believe your board asked for independent authority to conduct whatever investigations are necessary. And that's, that's what I think we produced.
Right. Thank you. So I mean, I, I do believe that the items requested by the public are in the current ordinance. If for any reason, uh, we, it's revealed over the next year of this office functioning, that there is a shortcoming of any kind, then we can always revise the ordinance or, uh, you know, update the, the RFP and the services that are being provided by the independent office of the inspector general. Any further-
I'll just add one thing, which is, I mean, I think it was clarifying from the public testimony. People were saying, design an ordinance for the worst case scenario, for a bad actor, for everything else. And, um, I mean, I just, that's just not how I would design laws, assuming that all people or all systems or everything else is broken when they are actively and proactively engaging with these issues right now. So I, it's, I understand that approach. But I think in general, governments should not pass laws assuming the worst case scenarios in all instances, and it should recognize when you have current staff who are engaging and proactively trying to do it, and then have the protections that are best practices outlined. And so it's a philosophical difference in how you approach things, but, um, but I, that's why I'm supportive of it.
Thank you. We, we will, of course, regularly receive reports that will be made public from the office of inspector general as described in this ordinance and in the RFP. And so those reports will certainly be opportunities to update the ordinance and, um, for, you know, address any shortcomings that are, become evident. All right, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion by Supervisor Kennedy and a second by Supervisor Friend. Clerk, call up, please.
Supervisor Friend.
Aye.
Coonerty.
Aye.
Capit.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
And Koenig.
Aye.
Item passes unanimously.
Right. The Office of the Inspector General ordinance being approved in concept, that'll come back for a second read at our December 13th meeting. We'll now proceed with our scheduled item for 10:30 a.m. This is item 11. The board supervisors shall recess in order to permit the board directors of the Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water Conservation Districts on seven to convene and carry out to our regularly scheduled meeting. So I will now recess the board supervisor's meeting and hand it over to Supervisor Friend, who is our chair of the, of Zone Seven.
Thank you, Chair Koenig. Madam Clerk, do you need some time in order to promote any of our additional panelists?
I've sent requests. If you'll just give me one moment, let me confirm that everybody has accepted the promotion. Kirby, if you would please accept the promotion, we do need to have you as a panelist for roll call. Thank you so much. Okay, Kirby's been granted the ability to speak, so at this time I do believe that everybody should be promoted that needs to be promoted. Let me double check that Mr. Strudley was able to accept. Yes, he was. Thank you so much, Chair. We're ready.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our roll call to order the Santa Cruz County Board of Directors, Flood Control and Water Conservation District, or Zone Seven, our December 6th, 2022 meeting. If we could begin with a roll call, please.
Director Koenig.
Here.
Coonerty.
Here.
Capit.
Here.
McPherson. Colbertson. Billisich.
Here.
Chair Friend.
Here.
And our non-voting members, Director Harris.
Here.
Thank you. Siri. And our last one, Lucas. Thank you, Chair. You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number two, which is the consideration of any late additions or deletions to the consent and regular agenda. Director Machado, do we have any changes to today's agenda?
Thank you, Chair. No changes today.
Thank you, Director Machado. Move on to oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address us on items that are not on today's agenda or within the purview of Zone Seven. Is there any member of the community that would like to address us today?
We have no speakers in chambers, Chair.
And do we have any on Zoom?
None on Zoom as well.
Are there any directors that would, that have an oral communication on something not on today's agenda but within the purview? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item four, which is the approval of the Zone Seven board meeting minutes. Are there any changes to today's minutes by any of the directors? Uh, seeing or hearing none, is there any member of the community that would like to address us on the minutes? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
No speakers on Zoom, Chair Friend.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Director Billisich and a second from Director Capit. If we could have a roll call, please.
Director Koenig.
Aye.
Coonerty.
Aye.
McPherson. Capit. Billisich.
Aye.
And Chair Friend.
All right. We'll now move on to, thank you, I'm sorry about that. We'll now move on to item five, which is action on the consent agenda, or items six through nine. Are there any directors that would like to comment or ask any questions on items on today's consent agenda? Director Billisich.
Yes, I had a question about the dates for the upcoming meetings. If they're all on Zoom, that should be great, but I noticed we have three in Santa Cruz and one in Watsonville. Usually we have two and two.
Thank you, Director Billisich. Matt Machado here. I think we've, uh, you know, the second one that normally would be in Watsonville is our budget hearing proposed in Santa Cruz. I mean, it's up to the board if you want to make some changes there, but that's, that's how we proposed it. And I, I know that, um, uh, Mr. Strudley's on the, on the call. He may have some background information on, on this change. So Mark, if you're available to, to comment on that, otherwise it's up to the discretion of the board if you want to make that change.
Yeah, the, uh, thanks, uh, Matt. So the, the budget hearing for the past couple of years has been held in Santa Cruz. And part of that is consistency with the, uh, remote meeting capabilities through COVID. At this point, the, my, still my understanding that the city of Watsonville board chambers doesn't have hybrid capability. So part of the reason we're proposing the May 30th budget hearing meeting in Santa Cruz is because of the hybrid capabilities of the county, uh, chambers as well.
Could it be, uh, if, I mean, if it's remote, it really doesn't matter. But if we end up having to meet in person, um, could it be changed to Watsonville?
I think it, uh, you know, certainly at the discretion of the, the board, we can make those changes during the year if we go away from the hybrid or from the remote setting.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to call it to our attention because usually it's split two and two.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other directors with questions on the consent agenda? Uh, seeing none, is there any member of the community that would like to address us on the consent agenda?
We do have one speaker in chambers.
Thank you, Becky Steinbrenner. I think, um, Ms. Billisich brings up a very good point, and I, I am aware that after January 1st, there is a state law change that will require a, an in-person quorum. Unless the state of emergency is, is not declared ended in February. So she brings up a very good point, and I think it's only fair to split the meetings two and two, as they have been, and to provide equal access from members of the public in Watsonville with these meetings here. So please, if, if council can direct perhaps that issue about the changes to require an in-person quorum, I would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or comments from community members on consent?
We have no further speakers in chambers and no speakers on Zoom.
All right, thank you. And, and that law actually takes effect on March 1st, not on January 1st. The January meeting will definitely be held hybrid. So seeing no additional comments, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Is there a motion from, uh, the board? I'll move adoption of the consent agenda.
No, second.
We have a motion from Director Koenig and a second from Director Billisich. If we could have a roll call, please.
Director Koenig.
Aye.
Coonerty.
Aye.
McPherson. Capit.
Aye.
Billisich.
Aye.
And Chair Friend.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. That, I believe, is the conclusion of our Zone Seven meeting. Thank you, Director Billisich, for hopping on. And I'll turn it back to, uh, Chair Koenig in the board of supervisors meeting.
Thank you, Director Friend.
Thank you.
Now resume the regular meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. We have a scheduled item for 10:45 a.m., which is item 12, the presentation of the 2022, 2023 Santa Cruz County Green Business Certification and Recertification Awards is outlined in the memorandum with the Deputy CAO Director of Community Development and Infrastructure. And for a report on this item, we have Bo Hoxford, our Department of Community Development, Infrastructure, Recycling, and Solid Waste Services, along with Brooke Wright and Jackie Castor, Castor Enia, Devia, from Environmental Innovations and County's Green Business Program Partners. Take it away.
Good morning, Board. Chair Koenig, thank you. On behalf of the department, excuse me, on behalf of the Department of Community Development and Infrastructure, we are pleased to be here presenting the Green Business Awards certification recipients for the first time since 2019 due to COVID. All the recipients have already received their certificates for completion of certifying or recertifying as a green business. However, we would like to formally recognize them today for their achievements. I would like to give a brief history of the program before passing the baton to our partners in implementing the program, Brooke Wright and Jackie Castorina Devila with Environmental Innovations. The County's Green Business Certification Program is an incentive-based program designed to encourage businesses to meet and exceed environmental standards while conserving natural resources. The businesses that have been certified have voluntarily reduced water consumption, retrofitted lights, and made other electrical modifications to reduce energy consumption. These businesses have also reduced solid waste through recycling and smarter purchasing and have gone above and beyond regulatory requirements by implementing pollution preventing, prevention practices and in their businesses. The county's certification process involves a series of rigorous audits by environmental and conservation experts to come up with the best available technology to prevent pollution and conserve natural resources. Certified businesses have invested significant time, effort, and financial resources to ensure that they meet the criteria for certification. These businesses are the industry front runners that meet and exceed exceptional environmental standards. The counties of Santa Cruz began its Green Business Certification Program in 2003. The California Green Business Certification Program is endorsed by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Toxic Substances Control and was established by AB 913 in 2011. Funding for the Green Business Program is provided by Recycling and Solid Waste Services, Sanitation, Zone Five Flood Control District, Countywide Flood Control District, and the Paharo Storm Drain Maintenance District. Environmental Innovations has been our green business partner since 2017, and we're excited to be resuming our recognition ceremony again this year. We would just like to thank your board for your support to keep this program successful. So now I'd like to pass the mic to Brooke and Jackie, who will give the presentation highlighting the accomplishments of the Green Business Program over the past few years.
Thank you. Thank you, Bo. Thank you for the numbers.
You just checked, your mic is on. Yeah, should be green.
How's that?
Better.
All right. Great. Well, thank you so much for having us here. We are so excited to be here to celebrate the certification and the hard work of over 100 green businesses with you today. It's a special honor to present to this board because it was here that Joe Fleming and her team, or a team of other county employees, started the local green business program about 20 years ago. We are honored to be here and share with you how that investment from this county has flourished and evolved locally and statewide, especially over the last few years. As you can see, what was originally a local program for small businesses is now serving large parts of the state, providing free services, recognition, and rebates to thousands of diverse businesses from all different types of sectors that choose to be strong environmental stewards. As a program that relied heavily on in-person technical assistance pre-pandemic, we had to think on our feet to help businesses safely and equitably over these last few years and to support them through a tough time with resources historically outside of our green business certification process. We were so heartened that even in such trying times, the business community was still motivated to pursue certification. And before COVID, one of our most cherished benefits to participants and to program staff was to join recognition and networking events. Please enjoy this short video highlighting how we managed to recognize businesses during Earth Month 2021 without gathering as a group. And I also want to give a quick shout out to Innovator Business, The Ride Guides, who captured most of the footage that you'll see in this video. We hope. It was, last time it was- It was, last time it was opening in a web browser. If there's a way to. Just one moment. Not on my power plate. Just one moment. We're having a brief technical difficulty. There you go. I just need one moment to switch presentations.
What's up, everyone? We just finished up with Santa Cruz City businesses. Now we're going to go drop off these flowers to our Santa Cruz County and Capitola businesses. Let's go. What's up, everyone? We just finished up with Santa Cruz City businesses. Now we're going to go drop off these flowers to our Santa Cruz County and Capitola businesses. Let's go.
Earth Day is tomorrow, and you guys make every day Earth Day by being certified green.
Yes.
Thank you. We appreciate it, and we're super happy that we were able to work with the whole program to get this done.
Thank you to all of you and all those certified businesses we couldn't get to. Thanks for always making every day Earth Day.
So that was really fun, obviously, and such a great opportunity to be able to meet with the businesses, knowing that we couldn't bring them indoors. So. Dance to this. Okay. Great. We have one more video to show you. Hopefully we'll be, we're dialed for that one. So currently, there are three programs in Santa Cruz County, each of which finds unique ways to serve their unique communities. In the city of Watsonville's program, the business, the Green Business Program has been helping restaurants and food trucks in English and Spanish switch from plastic, single-use footwear to reusable dishes, providing free dishes and additional rebates for those that also pursued certification. In the city of Santa Cruz, staff helped businesses comply with that city's similar ordinance through technical assistance and also provided additional rebates to any city businesses doing certification. At the county, additional cash incentives were provided to nonprofits and restaurants pursuing certification, but also to support them through what was a particularly difficult time for them. And all of these efforts and a system of gathering data through our certification process led to some pretty impressive and quantifiable environmental outcomes across the county. And now Jackie will share some more specifics about our strategies.
So we were able to provide rebates sometimes up to $1,500 for this.
Through certification, we continue to assess resource use and connected businesses with our partners to achieve an even greater environmental impact. So in order to better serve the communities that we work for, we made equity an emphasis for the program, largely influenced by the city of Watsonville's own program. And as a result, Environmental Innovations hired several Spanish-speaking coordinators like myself, who can work with previously underserved communities. Bueno, muchas gracias a todos los negocios que están con nosotros hoy. So in addition to working with businesses, we've had the pleasure to work with multiple partners to not only certify schools, but to drive environmental education throughout the county. Funded by the county's Green Schools Program, our partners at Coastal Watershed Council provide in-classroom education, because as we all know, kids are the future. Meanwhile, our partners at the Santa Cruz County Office of Education have been hard at work driving environmental literacy and action amongst administration, students, and staff. They have integrated our Green Schools checklist and the Coastal Watershed Council's educational material throughout all of these programs listed here. We're excited to see where these partnerships take us and to see the future environmental impacts of our work. So now I'm excited to share about the PVUSD Green Schools Pilot Program, where for the first time, we are providing technical assistance to a robust district like Paharo Valley Unified. In the following video, you will see my alma mater, Calabasas Elementary School, our first certified green school, whose green team is here with us today.
That's the first green school as part of this pilot, not the first green school ever.
Yes.
The Calabasas Green Team has been around for, this is our eighth year. The first step we took was just to make contact with the Green Business Network and Green Schools to find out what would be involved. It is kind of a mishmash group of kids that collect data about different problems.
They've done a lot of work locally that they could do at the school, but becoming a green school, going beyond just what they could do locally and influencing the district as well. I've seen students who are a lot more aware, mostly of their local environment. They're aware that they have the power to control where they live and what environment they live in is like. And they take an active participating role in doing that.
My favorite thing about the Green Schools program is teaching students, keeping a green world for the future. We need, we need more, more of this kind of stuff done. Younger kids, they, they enjoy when we tell them, like, you know, this is going to be compost. We're going to use it as soil and stuff like that. So they're, they get excited for stuff like that.
Gives kids agency, gives them a chance to be powerful, to have a message, to take the concern that they have for Monterey Bay and the planet in general and turn it into action and to stand up to grownups who aren't always doing the right thing.
The changes that I've seen is students, you know, asking like, hey, where, where do we throw this stuff?
Right to do a compost bin around the parks.
Why would that help?
Because people take their snack to the park and after school sees a lot of trash in the park.
My name is Ubanil Avaloskakobo.
Can you tell us why you joined the green team?
To find a way to make the world a better place and our community.
If a school wanted to start a green schools program, I mean, a big part of education is collaborating with others. We collaborate with other schools around academics, around discipline, around everything else. So reach out to other schools that have done it. It'll make the path a little bit easier for everybody. I supported starting the Green Schools program at Calabasas because I felt it was the next step for our kids and our school community.
I wanted to be part of something bigger. I wanted the kids to know that it's not just here at Calabasas, it's something bigger.
I'm not even sure if there's such thing as a green schools district. But my hope for the future of the Green Schools program and the district, I'd like to see the district become a green schools district, see all the schools implement the changes that, that we did.
So I'd like to invite the green team up for a picture. And if we can give them another round of applause for the work that they, that they continue to do every day. Anybody wants to join them?
Begin smile. Okay, welcome to the sun.
Well, the Calabasas. Well, the Calabasas Green Team, well, the Calabasas Green Team has been around for, this is our.
Yeah, it's almost done.
The one right about that.
Yeah, we'd also like to give a shout out for the additional schools that were certified during this time. Yeah, if we can also get a round of applause for them. So this concludes our presentation. Thank you to the Board for the opportunity to share this update with you today and for recognizing all of these businesses who are going above and beyond to drive sustainability within our communities. Thank you. Now Chair Koenig, I'd like to pass it back to you.
Thank you so much, Green Business Team. The name of the businesses that have qualified for this year's Green Businesses Award will now be read by supervisory district. So the representatives of these businesses can stand together as a group to be recognized for their efforts. As your business is called, please stand up. Please remain standing until we have read the names of all businesses. And members of the audience, please hold your applause until the end of the reading. We'll start with the businesses in the first district announced by myself. First district businesses that have received certification include Peterson Home Enhancement, Blue Circle, The Hook, Capitola, Bicycle Trip Capitola, Lydia Harville State Farm Agent, Back in Shape, Fine Peoples, SoCal Avenue, Shakespeare Play On, Canily Healing Arts, Happy Valley Elementary, Party On, American Red Cross Central Coast Chapter, Santa Cruz County, Air from the Heart, Congregational Church of SoCal, SoCal Creek Water District, Emily Ann Polari DC, Effective Action Consulting, Palo Alto Medical Foundation SoCal Physical Therapy, Palo Alto Medical Foundation Allergy, MM Green Packaging Solutions, Communication Service Co., Therapeutic Healthcare Collective. And all. Now handed to Supervisor Friend to read the second district businesses.
Thank you, Chair Koenig. We have a number of districts, businesses in the second district, including the Capital Wine Bar and Merchants, Caruso's Tuscan Cuisine, Alcal Financial, Central Fire Protection District, Lilla and Wolf Hair Company, New Leaf Community Markets, the Resource Conservation District, Dreamcatch Properties, Early Bird Airport Shuttle, Bay Federal Credit Union and Aptos, Web of Life Field or the Wolf School, Temple Bethel, Calabasas Elementary School, Monterey Bay Renewable Fuels One, Blossoms Farm Store and Cafe, A&amp;A Organic Farms, ABC Daycare, Bay Federal Credit Union and Freedom, Nordic Naturals, Omni Health Medicine, The Hook Outlet, and Watsonville Wetlands Watch. I'll pass it on to Supervisor Coonerty.
Thank you. In the third district, we have Civic Elementary School, App Brown Nutrition, AO Copywriting and Marketing Agency, Highway One Distribution, Charlie, Charlie Hong Kong, Environmental Innovations, the California Certified Organic Farmers, CCOF, the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, the Santa Cruz office, Nana Eritrean Foods, Space Camp Studios, Miller Maxfield, Altera Solar, Rogue Partner, and the Bonny Doone Elementary School District. And now I'll pass it on to Supervisor Capit in the fourth district.
Okay, thank you. I counted them well. We have the majority. We have more than anybody. Okay, we have 30. Okay. In the fourth district, I'd like to acknowledge AU Janitorial Service, Bay Federal Credit Union, Bonita's Fashion, Central Coast Pack and Ship, Centro Familiar Vero, Commissary on Walker Street, Davis Property Group, Dos Hermanos Pupasteria, El Paharo Community Development Corporation, El Pueblo Market, Freedom Center, Chiropractic, Fruition Brewing, Frutaria, Quetzal, Goodwood, Goodwood Products from Summit Views LLC, Granite Construction, J&amp;S Catering, JD Wireless, ABK Insurance Company, Kitchen Incubator, El Paharo Community Development Corporation, Miranchito Supermercado, My Mom's Mole, My Mom's Mole Home Office, Paharo Valley Loes and Fishes, and Queen's Shoes and More, Rebecca's Bakery, Martinelli Apple Cider Company, San Gabriel Archangel, Taqueria La Fuente, Vicky's Alterations, and Watsonville Cyclery. And I'll pass it over to Supervisor McPherson.
Thank you. In the fifth district, I'd like to recognize Pitch Hub, The Builders Collective, Lyjacks, Santa Cruz Rehearsal Studios, The Cooks Bookcase, Ride the Redwoods, Peratus Precision Translations Incorporated, Waterstar Motors, George H. Wilson, Kai Family Dentistry, Green 81, Wilson Electric, Granite Construction, Felton Quarry and Asphalt Plant, Burnett Rose LLC, Scotts Valley Water District, Spiraling's Communications, Central California Alliance for Health, and the Santa Cruz County Office of Education. Congratulations. Chair, I, I think all of, each of us would like to say, this is really a rewarding time, you know, 20 years. And once again, it, it shows the leadership of Santa Cruz County and all the agencies within this county getting ahead of everybody else as we have in so many other environmentally related issues throughout the year. I mean, we just named 100 certified companies of one type or another. It's, it's really something that I, it's especially encouraging to see the young people here and those who are participating, because they're, they're, as you said, they're our future. And they're, to get them started young, so we older folks can catch up with them, that's just really truly amazing. And congratulations to the school districts in particular for getting the young students involved in this right now. Because we need to, we need every, every aspect of business, education, or wherever the case may be, to really have us do a better job of protecting our environment. And I will say, Santa Cruz County is doing a better job of its environment. It's because of people like you who put it on the front page and say, this is important to us today for the future tomorrow. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor McPherson. Well said. Now, on behalf of the County of Santa Cruz, I want to thank again each business recognized today for their continued support in the county's green business program. And we invite the business representatives to join in a luncheon at Abbott Square that has been provided by the Department of Community Development and Infrastructure and Environmental Innovations. A big round of applause again for everyone honored today. And that's it. The Board will now take a short five-minute break, and we'll be back at 11:15. We'll now resume the regular meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. We have one more item on our morning agenda. It is item 10, to consider approval and concept of ordinance permitting chapter 2.120 of Santa Cruz County Code relating to the membership of the Fire Department Advisory Commission. And schedule the ordinance for second reading and final adoption on December 13th, 2022, as outlined in the memorandum with the Director of General Services. And for a report on this item, we have our Director of General Services, Michael Beaton.
Thank you, Board. Chair Koenig.
Thank you, Board. Chair Coney, Michael Beaton, Director of General Services. Today, we have an item that is requesting approving concept, an amendment to the county code related to membership of the County Fire Department Advisory Commission and set the second hearing for December thirteenth. The Santa Cruz County Fire Department Advisory Commission is a seven-person commission with comprised of five appointees from each or two visorial district and whom also reside within the county fire service area with the exception of District Four. In addition, the two additional appointees are nominated by the County Fire Volunteer Company Officers Association as well as the now dissolved Office of Emergency Services, which used to be a division within the Department of General Services. The recommendation to the board today is to allow flexibility for all board members to appoint the most qualified individual within not just the county fire service area, but as well as anybody in the supervisory district availability. In addition, it does ask for the code to be corrected from two twenty eighteen, which was the last time it was updated, to change the designation from the Office of Emergency Services to the Department of General Services, which acts as the county contract administrator over our county fire service agreement with Cal Fire, who does the provisions of our county fire services. With that said, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Director Beaton. Other comments or questions from members of the board? All right. Supervisor McPherson? No? All right. Seeing none, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item?
Good morning. Excuse me. Good morning. Becky Steinbruner, resident of CSA forty-eight County Fire. I've attended nearly all of the Fire Department Advisory Commission meetings since two thousand and fifteen. And I have a lot of concerns. First of all, the strikeout underlying version of this was not visible to the public because the link was broken. So I have read it here today in the binder from the hallway. And I have written a letter to Supervisor Friend copying County Council about a problem in the second district that the second district commissioner does not live in the CSA forty-eight area. And what I see now is that this change will allow anybody within a supervisory district to serve on the county fire commission. And I am opposed to that, and here's why. This commission makes a lot of recommendations on financial matters that affect the CSA forty-eight property owners. They should not, they have no, they have no skin in that game. And they also, from what I've observed of the second district commissioner, who lives in the urban area, he has no concept of what the rural dwellers really need from county fire department. It took him a while to understand what county fire department was. So please don't make this change. I think it is, I think it is absolutely necessary that anybody who serves on this commission in particular, because of the nature of what they are making recommendations to you about, they must live in CSA forty-eight. And I would like to-
Ms. Steinbruner.
Thank you. And no, I'm sorry. Thanks. You've made your point clear. Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers online at this time.
All right. Bringing back to the board for deliberation and action. I'll move the recommended action.
Well, second.
All right, motion by Supervisor Coonerty, second by Supervisor Caput. I'll just add that I am in support of the motion, reason being, I mean, in fact, the initial member of the public that I, or commissioner that I appointed to this commission was actually outside of CSA forty-eight. Once we realized that she was not within CSA forty-eight, she did step down. And we replaced her with someone who was. That said, I think that the wildland urban interface in our community extends to many parts of the county that are not necessarily in CSA forty-eight. So while I understand the member of the public who spoke about the financial implications that of the committees, you know, first of all, they make recommendations only, not decisions. And so any recommendations that they would make to the board would come to us. And so that would be an opportunity to hear more about any financial implications that were not considered by members of the Fire Department Advisory Committee. I also think it's constantly a challenge to find good people to serve on commissions. And so having the additional flexibility is valuable for this board to appoint the most qualified commissioners. And again, just to reiterate, I think that there's a lot of people who benefit from Cal Fire and County Fire Service that actually still live within other parts of the wildland urban interface and might be part, live within Central Fire or Branson Forty Fire or any of the different fire districts. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, Clerk, we'll call it, please.
Supervisor Friend.
Aye.
Coonerty.
Aye.
Caput.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
And Conick.
Aye.
Item passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. That item being passed, we'll now move into closed session. County councils, are there any reportable actions in closed session?
Not today.
All right, we will take a five-minute break and convene for closed session at eleven thirty-five. We'll now resume the regular meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, December sixth. That is one thirty-three PM. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Supervisor Friend.
Here.
Coonerty.
Here.
Caput.
Here.
McPherson.
Here.
And Conick.
Here.
Thank you, Chair. You have quorum.
Thank you. We have several items this afternoon, items thirteen through seventeen, and they are all the continued public hearing to consider the sustainability policy and regulatory update. I'm going to propose that since these materials have been available to the public since, who was April of, February of this year, thank you for the correction. And we have taken extensive public comment over numerous public meetings, study sessions of the Planning Commission, meetings of the Planning Commission, meetings of this board. I'm going to propose that we group all of the public comment for these items at the beginning. And I'm happy to allow extra time of up to three minutes for anyone who wants to comment on the numerous issues that we'll be discussing in the sustainability policy and regulatory update. And then we'll move forward with staff presentations on each item and the particular elements of the sustainability update contained in each item. And then bring it back to the board for discussion and vote for each item. And then proceed that way from through items thirteen and seventeen.
Chair, if I might, we've planned one presentation at the beginning.
Okay.
And then presumably we'd get to public comment. And then we'll do motions on each item as they appear in the packet.
Okay, so then we would begin with a staff presentation. We'll have public comment on any of the elements of the sustainability update for items thirteen through seventeen, and then proceed with a vote on each item.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. There's no objections then. We'll begin, and I'll hand it over to Matt Machado, our Director of Community Development and Infrastructure, and Stephanie Hansen, Assistant Director. I'll turn it right to Stephanie. Thank you.
There we go. Good afternoon, Chair Supervisors. Stephanie Hansen, Assistant Director, Community Development and Infrastructure. With me today is Matt Machado, the Director of CDI. Today, we're continuing the public hearing on the sustainability policy and regulatory update. At your last meeting on November fifteenth, we did an overview of all of the items. And we received direction from the board on several items which we'll highlight today. The project documents before you today for consideration have been updated as directed by the board with select staff clarifications and map amendment changes. There are, as Chair mentioned, five sustainability update items on your agenda. And we'll be presenting them together in the order they appear on the agenda. First, we'll quickly review the project goals and timeline before providing an overview of the key changes in each of the documents. The more, the board may then discuss and take public comment. And recommended actions are included in your packet for each of the five items. After public comment, the board can proceed with the items on the agenda. The sustainability update has been prepared by a team of hardworking policy planners, including Anais Shank, Annie Murphy, and Natisha Williams. Due to the breadth of the project documents, all three are again participating remotely in order to help us answer your questions while referencing the documents if needed. We'd also like to acknowledge the in-depth work of the Planning Commission on this project as well as help from County Council, support from the CAO's office. Okay, before we begin, we wanted to just provide a quick review of the project in case anybody new is joining us today. The purpose of this project is to promote more sustainable communities within the county's urban areas. As we discussed in more detail at the last meeting, the sustainability update has four main components. Amendments to the County General Plan, which includes our local coastal program, amendments to the county code, new design guidelines, and amendments to the land use and zoning maps. The Sustainability Update Project has several key goals. First, the project implements the Sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan, which was accepted by the board in two thousand and fourteen. Second, the project aims to update, streamline, and modernize the county development codes. Project also implements elements of the Pleasure Point Commercial Corridor Vision and Guiding Principles. A planning study for Portola Drive in forty-first area is completed in two thousand and eighteen. Changes to the general plan address projected growth for the unincorporated area over a twenty-year planning horizon from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and forty. Finally, the project is consistent with local, state legislation, and regional plans as well as the California Coastal Act. Sustainability update also includes a number of policies and revised development standards that are aimed at creating opportunities for a range of housing types, amendments which will be key to helping us meet our regional housing needs allocation of four thousand six hundred and thirty-four units in the upcoming sixth cycle. Briefly, just a review of the project timeline and how we got here. Extensive public outreach was conducted over the past ten years for the various planning efforts that make up the sustainability update. But more recent efforts began with the release of the draft documents in February of this year. These documents were made available on the project website, which also includes a survey and public comment portal to collect feedback on the project. Following the release of the project documents, the county held seven evening community meetings to inform the public and offer opportunity for comment. Subsequently, we conducted ten study sessions with various county commissions, including four with the Planning Commission. After that, the Planning Commission held three public hearings, conducted a very detailed review of the project documents, and made several modifications before recommending the project to the board for adoption. There was a total of twenty-two meetings, including today. An environmental impact report was prepared for the project, and the board certified it at your last meeting. Assuming the board adopts the proposed amendments, the next step will be for the Coastal Commission to consider and certify the amendments. Depending on the time they require, we anticipate that the update will take effect in late two thousand and twenty-three or two thousand and twenty-four, possibly in phases. The county's general plan has not received a major update in over twenty-five years. Amendments to the general plan include a new introduction, land use element and circulation elements that incorporate a new emphasis on sustainability as well as the integration of vision and guiding principles and land use and transportation recommendations from the Sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan. Accommodates new population, housing, and employment targets for two thousand and forty, which include forty-five housing, forty-five hundred housing units and over six million square feet in commercial development over the twenty-year horizon. The new built environment element integrates existing land use and community design chapters with a focus on residential and commercial development, particularly infill development in our urban areas. This element includes new urban high-density residential flex designation, which accommodates a greater intensity of residences along our transportation corridors and in key activity centers within the USL or urban services line. This new district, along with other changes to development standards such as expanded density ranges, creates opportunity for infill housing for residents at various income levels and household sizes.
We've lost a presentation. It might be worth checking the connection.
I believe the system may be rebooting, but if not, we're going to have to reach out to ISDL. I'm going to try a couple of settings. One moment, please.
I'll note I-
Continue or?
Sure, one moment. I'll just note that I think this did happen the other day at the RTC meeting here. Oh, there we go. Yeah, we just had a loose cable.
Great. I understand people on the outside can see it. The built environment element includes a new residential flex designation, which is meant to accommodate a greater intensity of residences. This new district, along with changes to the development standards such as expanded density ranges, create opportunities for housing. The new access and mobility element reflects a focus on movement of people by a variety of modes instead of movement of single occupant vehicles. The project also partially amends the Conservation and Open Space Chapter, renamed Agriculture, Natural Resources, and Conservation. Changes to this chapter focus on updating agricultural and water and groundwater policies. Partial minor amendments are also proposed for the Parks Recreation and Public Facilities element to be consistent with the Park Strategic Plan and ensure that county facilities are adequate to accommodate growth. There's also revised glossary and new appendices as well. Other general plan chapters will not be changed. At the Planning Commission meetings on September fourteenth and twenty-first, the Planning Commission recommended several changes to the general plan. And some of these changes to policies include ensuring access and open space and parks for disadvantaged communities, allowing up to eighty percent of mixed-use project to be residential. That's eighty percent of the square footage. Ensuring shared mobility services do not interfere with pedestrian mobility. Protecting agricultural land, retaining the scenic road designation on Urban Highway Number One. Removing transportation demand management strategies related to parking reductions as well as a number of other minor changes. Complete list of their changes was included as attachment AL in the November fifteenth agenda. Their work was highlighted in yellow, and additional minor staff changes were shown in green. At the November fifteenth meeting, the board reviewed staff clarifications and directed staff to include four of the proposed clarifications to the general plan in the final drafts. To implement this direction, staff has made the following changes to the built environment element, and these changes are highlighted in Aqua. And Policy BE one point one point one, tie, we tied the USL expansion to level of service requirements in the access and mobility element and adjusted language prohibiting USL expansion on ag resource land. On Policy two point one point one, we adjusted the density language to acknowledge that density bonus may allow additional units beyond the density range per state law. For Policy two point one point seven, we changed urban to required to clarify that roadways should meet the design criteria regardless of street type. And in Policy three point two point six, we removed the inclusionary housing requirement for permanent room housing projects, which are already affordable by design. And since the inclusionary housing requirements only apply to newly constructed units. Another component of the project includes targeted land use and rezoning of twenty parcels located throughout the county. There are two types of land- There are two types of land use changes. The first type are amendments to eliminate inconsistencies between the general plan maps and the zoning maps on 11 parcels. County is required by state law to ensure consistency between the general plan land use designations and the zoning maps. No intensity of land use is proposed as a result of these corrections. This slide shows the proposed map changes in North and South County, five total, changes proposed for consistency with the general plan. In Mid-County, there are also eight properties that will change to correct zoning and land use inconsistencies. These are shown in the map on the left. Second type of land use amendment is intended to implement the project goals of increased housing options and help address the housing crisis. This portion of the project includes the rezonings of nine underutilized parcels along transportation corridors. One six-acre parcel at SoCal Drive and Thurber Lane, also shown in the map on the left, is vacant and would be rezoned to a mix of residential flex and commercial to facilitate mixed-use development. Per Board direction at the November 15th meeting, the nine proposed parcels along Portola Drive were reduced to eight parcels, and these would now be re-designated and rezoned to residential urban high multifamily residential 1.5. This would still facilitate a transition to a mix of multifamily units dispersed with neighborhood commercial in this area, which is consistent with the Pleasure Point study in order to support workforce housing. Next year, as the county works to accommodate our arena, additional properties along other transportation corridors would be identified for rezoning to higher-density residential The next item on today's agenda is amendments to the zoning regulations in Chapter 1310, coastal regulations in Chapter 1320, and agricultural regulations in 1650. Chapter 1310 has been updated and reorganized to align with the new general plan goals and policies. New residential and commercial zone districts and updated development standards support more housing choices and economic vitality. Regulations for agricultural land have been updated to support the local agricultural economy. The update also includes new regulations for community events and commercial weddings on rural residential and agricultural parcels. Updated use charts in all zone districts include updated permit requirements and modernized uses. Approval levels for project types have also been reviewed and right-sized as appropriate. In Chapter 1320, the coastal zone regulations, language regarding coastal zone principally permitted land uses was moved from 1310. These establish the types of permits that cannot be appealed to the Coastal Commission. Minor edits to Chapter 1650 clarify agricultural land preservation standards, align with revised general plan policies, and provide a new administrative review for reduced agricultural buffer setbacks. Planning Commission recommended several amendments to County Code, Chapter 1310, including changes to reduce standards for intensification of nonconforming, non-residential land uses, applying floor-area ratio parking exceptions to other types of high-density residential projects, requiring private open space for residential flex and mixed-use projects, increasing approval requirements for community events, limiting the size of produce markets, and changing project review levels to require a public hearing at the Planning Commission for several project types, including animal shelters, wineries, organized camps, and commercial projects over 10,000 square feet. The Commission also directed staff to return in two to three years to evaluate the public hearing review levels and make recommendations as necessary. The complete list of the recommended changes to the code is provided as Attachment AM in the November 15th Board Agenda. To implement the Board's direction, the following clarifications to Chapter 1310 were incorporated into the documents highlighted in Aqua in the underlined strike-through versions. In the residential uses chart, we removed private from the recreation and events to allow public open space in residential districts. In the commercial standards, we reduced the open space requirements for residential flex and mixed-use projects to a minimum of 50% for the residential units. We're allowing density bonus variations for less than 100% affordable housing developments in order to ensure consistency with our own requirements and state law. For agricultural produce markets and stands, we updated the ag uses chart to allow produce stands up to 800 square feet by right and allow larger produce stands up to 1,600 square feet with a minor use permit. Similarly, we retained the conditional use permit for larger produce markets between 1,800 and 3,600 square feet, and added criteria for those markets that exceed 1,800 square feet while retaining the absolute size limit consistent with the Planning Commission's direction. Corresponding definitions were also updated. This implements direction from the Board and updates the language on the size caps as recommended by the Planning Commission. The third item on today's agenda includes adding the new Chapter 1316 to the County Code entitled Parking and Circulation, as well as minor amendments to roadway and roadside improvements in Chapter 1510. The content of Chapter 1316 includes site access, off-street vehicle parking, including bicycle parking, driveway standards, and transportation-related site development standards for access and circulation. This section consolidates several existing sections throughout the County Code related to site access and parking. And key changes to these standards include updating the parking ratios and creating new bicycle designed standards for parking, new requirements for shower facilities, right sizing parking ratios according to industry standards, and requiring additional guest parking in the Live Oak, Sea Cliff, Aptos, La Selva, and Davenport Swanton designated areas, updating parking design per the Design Guidelines and modern regulations. Include Board requested transportation demand management measures, adding drive-through design standards, and consolidating site distance standards. We've removed loading requirements for small businesses and updated the roadway and private roadway definitions and design requirements. This chapter also includes a new transportation demand management section that was formerly part of Chapter 5.52, which will be repealed. These TDM requirements have been revised and expanded to require TDM programs for new large developments. Minor edits were also made to Chapter 1510 to clarify requirements for roadway and roadside improvements during the development process and remove the exception for minimum local street standards. At the public hearings in September, the Planning Commission did not recommend any changes to these chapters. However, minor changes were proposed by staff in the Public Works Division for consistency with current practice, and these have been incorporated into the attached strike-through version and highlighted in green. The fourth Sustainability Update item on today's agenda includes amendments to Titles 12 and 18 of the Code. These are particularly focused on modernization and consolidation of development approval procedures. Title 12 addresses the procedures for issuing building permits, and we've made changes to the definitions and minor changes to submittal requirements. Chapter 12.28, related to solar access, has been removed due to state regulations. The Solar Shade Control Act now protects solar access, and additional shading regulations were added into County Code Chapter 1311 to address shading by adjacent development. Title 18 addresses procedures for discretionary permits and legislative requirements. This title includes updates and reorganization of permit procedures, as well as revised findings for use and site development permits. The chapter also includes amendments to clarify procedures, streamline language, and ensure consistency with state law. The biggest change to the discretionary permit process is the new permit framework. Currently, planning permits are categorized by approval levels 1 through 7. Consistent with the goals of clarifying and standardizing the permit process, this chapter introduces a new planning permit framework that replaces the confusing approval levels with more descriptive permit names, such as minor use permit, administrative use permit, and conditional use permit. The new permit framework also introduces two new types of planning permits. There's the use permits for changes to land use and site development permits for projects that propose physical development of a site. A project may require one or both of these types, depending on what's proposed. This table shown in the slide provides a crosswalk identifying the corresponding approval level from the existing county code. New Chapters 1820 through 1880 include content consolidated from other chapters and provide legislative requirements, such as amending the general plan and creating planned use developments. Planning Commission recommended several amendments to Chapter 1810, including adding density bonus projects to the list of projects that require a public hearing, and expanding noticing requirements from 300 to 500 feet from a project property to improve transparency and public participation for several types of projects. The final agenda item today addresses the newly titled Site Development Design Review Chapter 1311, which has been reorganized and updated to codify new site development permit requirements and provide design review standards and requirements and findings to align with the new built environment element. A new site development permit chart details the approval level for a site development permit, and it echoes the use permit charts. Similar to use permits, project reviews for site development permits have also been reviewed and right-sized as appropriate. The chapter provides guidance and specific regulations that promote sustainable development in urban areas, fosters high-quality design and the creation of inviting neighborhoods, and supports functional and attractive commercial development in urban areas. Regulations in the chapter also protect scenic areas, environmental resource, and support healthy indoor and outdoor environments. Design review continues to be required for residential dwellings exceeding 5,000 square feet, residential development of three or more units, commercial, industrial, and public facility development, and land division. Chapter 1311 provides objective standards that are applied in conjunction with the new county design guidelines. Planning Commission changes included requiring a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission for construction of large projects, including residential development with 15 units or more, and commercial projects with over 10,000 square feet. The new Santa Cruz County design guidelines provide best practices for the design of buildings and sites to ensure functional and attractive designs, provide for gathering spaces, quality open space and landscaping, and green building and site design features. Major focus points include neighborhood transitions, protection of existing neighborhoods, and the relationship between private development and the street skate. The guidelines provide a flexible approach, allowing for creative designs and diverse architectural styles that meet goals and work in conjunction with development standards to ensure quality projects are compatible with the surrounding context. The new design guidelines apply to new development within the county's urban services line and rural services line, providing overarching guidelines applicable to all project types, as well as specific guidelines for multifamily residential mixed-use, including vertical and horizontal, commercial, guiding both new and infill development, workplace flex guidelines with specific design criteria for light industrial in the new Workplace Flex Zone District, special guidance for development in the Pleasure Point Corridor, Appendix B of the Design Guidelines, which incorporates the guiding design principles applicable to private development along Portola Drive and 41st Avenue from the Pleasure Point Study. Planning Commission did not recommend any changes to the design guidelines. However, the Commission did express opposition to the road diet design on Portola Drive. Development standards, as well as Appendix B of the guidelines, includes principles that specifically apply to private development along the corridor, such as setbacks in design style. This document does not include any requirement to implement a road diet on Portola Drive. And briefly, the Coastal Act requires that our changes to a jurisdiction's land use plan and local coastal implementation program, our general plan and code, be reviewed by the Coastal Commission. Since we're amending several chapters of the SSCC and the general plan, these amendments will need to be certified by the Coastal Commission once the Board, almost all of them, once the Board is done with their approval. To facilitate their review, county staff conducted a series of meetings with Coastal Commission staff in October through December of 2021. Amendments are required to be consistent with the California Coastal Act and internally consistent. Project EIR evaluated the LCP amendments for consistency with other LCP policies and found that the amendments were consistent with Coastal Act policies regarding coastal access, recreation, and visitor-serving uses, marine resources, land resources, and development. So this slide provides a summary of our recommended actions today. As I mentioned, there are five items on the agenda, and we'll continue this public hearing on all five items, 13 through 17. And this would include a consolidated public comments section on all the items. So we're asking the Board to continue the public hearing, adopt two resolutions that adopt the SEQA mitigation monitoring and reporting plan as required under SEQA, adopt the general plan amendments and the land use map amendments, adopt the county design guidelines, find that proposed amendments are consistent with the general plan and the California Coastal Act, and direct staff to submit the coastal amendments to the Commission for certification. We're asking the Board to approve several ordinances in concept amending the Code and one ordinance in concept amending the zoning map, and to direct the clerk of the Board to schedule the ordinances for second reading and final adoption at your next meeting on December 13th. We also have five slides that are available for each of the recommended actions if needed, but I'll end here, and that'll conclude our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions the Board may have. Thank you for listening again.
Thank you, Assistant Director Hanson. Are there comments or questions from members of the Board? Supervisor McPherson?
Yes.
Okay. I can't see any faces for folks online at the moment.
We do have one speaker online, Chair.
I'm sorry, I meant for Board members. Okay, hearing. Supervisor Friend, Kennedy, now. Okay, then I'll open it.
Comment now?
Yeah, if you'd like to supervise a cap it.
This is a, this is a very good proposal you're giving to us. It's got a lot of stuff in there. I'm surprised, I won't take too long. I'm just going to mention some of the notes that I wrote down. It deals with transportation, of course, and also walkability, neighborhoods, and parks. And is some of this related to the state mandate for cleaning up the air in California? We have the state mandate that you pretty much have to take out all these- We have the state mandate that you pretty much have to take out all these emissions out of the air. And so the only way to do that, of course, is more electric cars, I guess, or less gas use. But it's all connected. The trees, it mentions, you know, neighborhoods with a lot of trees. What about parking lots and shopping centers? A lot of those will have spaces for some trees, but then they die, and then they don't replace them. People are actually driving around the parking lot looking for a piece of shade. That could be said not only for shopping centers, but church parking lots, school parking lots, the school playgrounds and the whole thing. And also, I guess, farming. We used to have a lot of windrows where you had a lot of trees and stuff like that. So that's all kind of a part of this, and it's tied into climate change and cleaning up our area in California. You don't have to give a long answer, but these are just notes that I wrote down.
Thank you. There was a lot in there to unpack, so I'll just say briefly that there are many ways to address climate change, and one of them is the relationship between land use and transportation. So by working to have our growth within our urban services line, we're actually reducing the amount of car ridership and commuting that's going on. So by creating more livable communities and more walkable communities, by supporting transportation projects that have different kinds of modes of transportation, such as transit or micro mobility skateboards, you know, the whole range and facilitating better pedestrian facilities. We're also working to get people out of their cars. And if we, this project, we did a review on it, it reduces our emissions over time and therefore is, would be beneficial to climate change as compared to our current situation.
And then also parks and open space. Everything's all tied together. So somehow we can make this work, make, and scenic routes, I saw that. Highway one is still beautiful when you're driving it from Watsonville to Santa Cruz, but it needs more more attention and, you know, looking at it, keeping it beautiful. It's really, there's certain areas that are just really, if you look off to the side, beautiful, you know, beautiful highway one. But anyway, anyway, I'm all for it. Good job. I know that's a lot.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Caput. Supervisor McPherson?
Yeah, it could have been held till later, but I just, it's great to see this massive body of work finalized, update our general plan in the county and a local coastal plan, county code and the general plan. Land use and zoning maps, it's been about ten years in development. And although it's been stated many times before, I can't thank you, the planning department. I know that's your job, but it deserves the highest level of praise of what you've put together. And there probably, even with ten years, there's always going to be something at the end that says, oh, we should look into this more. But there comes a time when you have to make the decision and move on, and I think this is it. And I hope these major updates provide better clarity regarding the regulations and process for developers and individual homeowners to build more housing, which is a very important part of all this. And I see that in increasing the urban density line or the density line within the urban services line is the best hope we can have to provide housing. We sorely need and continue to protect our environment at the same time of protecting our rural, more rural areas. In District Five, in my district, and in particularly the San Rosales Valley, we all recognize that, given the constraints of lot size, we have a one-acre minimum, we have geological conditions and septic tank issues. The most, really, the most feasible path for additional housing is building accessory dwelling units or ADUs and tiny homes on wheels. I am concerned that the transportation demand management policies did not get recommended by the Planning Commission at this time with concurrence from the board at the last meeting. And I disagree with the Planning Commission's rationale that Metro, which some of us are on that board too, needs to prove its capacity to handle additional ridership before the county offers TDM incentives or transportation demand management incentives to reduce parking on housing along with transit corridors. But I do agree with the the planning staff that TDM strategies are a proven method of encouraging alternative methods of transportation, especially if the strategies are deployed along the transit corridors, which we plan to do, I think. I look forward to next year when the board can have more discussion regarding the feasibility of TDM policies. But overall, I think this really addresses the critical, if you can just compare it down to four or five issues of addressing the need for more housing, and I don't know how we're going to get to forty-six hundred more units in the next arena time limit. But the new permit regulations and targeting twenty county parcels in that process is good. I think we're really addressing our environmental constraints with a flexible approach to design guidelines that we have. And I think it's critically important, as Supervisor Caput made, that we we address, as was done way back in nineteen seventy-eight when Measure J was passed, that we preserve our agricultural lands to the best of our ability. That's going to be critical. But in the meantime, I want to congratulate the entire planning department and staff for finalizing this massive reset to modernize the county building policies. We, we've done a great job of that up to this year with an increasing population, and it's going to be a bigger challenge in this next segment that we go through. But we appreciate, we think, I think we have the format to address those issues. Sometimes they are conflicting issues, but I think we can do it with what you've presented. And I want to especially congratulate Ms. Hanson and her predecessors in the planning department and their directors for bringing this to us at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor McPherson. Well, I'll add that I think Supervisor Caput is right. This is a lot of material, and congratulations to the planning staff and the entire Department of Community Development and Infrastructure for getting it to this point. The way I look at it is, I mean, first of all, there's a lot of really great stuff in here. The new focus on fifteen-minute neighborhoods as a planning approach within the urban area, the idea of moving people, not just cars, with our transportation infrastructure. I think that's all really essential and will help us have the right focus as we move forward into the next century to build more sustainable infrastructure. And it really puts a lot of, you know, both practical and aspirational language into our general plan and reshapes it to do that. I mean, I think it's also important to note that a general plan is really, should be a living document. I mean, we can amend it up to four times a year. And I, you know, I guess the question is, would we need an EIR to update the general plan every time? I mean, if we find, for example, as, you know, projects come forward that there's a specific issue that we would need to update the general plan for or multiple projects. I mean, it's a small change. Can we do it without an EIR?
So we could, we can always rely on the EIR that was already done. If there was a change that it seemed like may have a significant impact on the environment, we could also do an addendum or supplement. You know, so for instance, when we look at the housing element update next year, we're likely to do an addendum for that, for that project. So we don't want to create more EIRs than we need to. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful. I mean, as I said, I think this creates an incredible new foundation, but I'm sure as we continue to build off of it, we'll inevitably run into things that need improvement or correction. Another question, so we're updating the residential density table, really for, for all of the levels of density from low to urban high. But my understanding is because there's also a zoning designation for parcels, nothing is actually going to automatically qualify for greater densities with the change in the general plan densities. Is that right? Or?
Well, all of the densities have been adjusted, so the potential is there for development to meet a higher density than it was able to before. And the residential standards in the code have also been adjusted to, for instance, for lot size, minimum lot size or setbacks. All those have been adjusted as well to try to create a little bit more units on any given parcel and actually meet the density. Because what we find is developments have a really hard time actually meeting the lowest density, let alone the highest in the range. So those have all been adjusted as well.
Just to be clear, so let's say a parcel zone residential urban high and the general plan designation is residential urban high, and the zoning plan designation is RM three point five, meaning one unit for every three thousand five hundred square feet. Now, in the past, it would have capped out at seventeen units per acre base density. Now it'd allow up to thirty under this, this new general plan amendment. Would we, I mean, but their zoning designation of RM three point five wouldn't automatically change, right?
Right. So the, whatever the zoning designation is on a particular parcel should be adjusted to fit with the general plan, the new general plan designation. There is an inconsistency there. I think the general plan would automatically rule. But they're meant to go hand in hand together. So as we look at any changes to the general plan map, we look at similar changes to the zoning map as well.
Right. Yeah, I mean, part of why I asked the question is not only, you know, some of the hoops that any particular project might have to jump through, but also, I mean, as we're preparing the housing element next year, obviously, we'll want to be able to say that a certain amount of the land area is, now qualifies for more housing. We can count that towards arena numbers. Makes our job a lot easier, right? If we are sort of doing this presumptive, you know, presumptively allowing for more units opposed to having to explicitly do it on, on each parcel. So that's why I want the clarification. I mean, so we could count the general plan designation, you know, towards the unit count?
Yeah, I mean, the general plan and the code go kind of hand in hand, right? So general plan's policy level, it does establish the density ranges, but it's the standards that are in the county code that are really important. One big change that we made to the code was to change how density is calculated. We used to do it on a net density basis, meaning you would remove open space and remove sensitive areas and remove all these things before you calculated the density on the remaining part of the parcel. We call that net density calculation. Now we're expanding it, so it's gross density. So if you have a one-acre parcel and it's allowed thirty units per acre, then that's what you can get on the site. There are some nuances to that relative to our environmental constraints, but we are opening up quite a bit how you can calculate density and then how much you can get on a site.
Okay, so, I mean, that's great, commit to gross rather than net. And but just to close off that discussion, so we would be able to count some of the general plan designation unit count. I mean, and even in shifting from gross to net essentially means that we're allowing for more units to be built. We can count that towards arena numbers?
Yes, anything that's developed, we'd count.
You know, I know, but I mean, even the four thousand six hundred and thirty-four units that we have to put in the plan, right? I mean, can we say that the new zoning map does accommodate more units? And, you know, if, let's just say, just with the change in these base densities, we can get a thousand more units, right? So that counts towards arena numbers?
So we, we calculated based on the changes that we were making to density and the standards, we needed to come up with a forecasted number that we could analyze for the, in the EIR, and that was forty-five hundred units, and that was actually fairly conservative. We, you know, we wanted to have a real basis in reality for how much was actually going to be built over twenty years. And that, that number was forty-five hundred units just based on those, those changes in the code, so.
Okay, great. My last question is about Appendix J, and I heard you call out that while, for example, the Planning Commission said they do not support the road diet on Portola, there's nothing in the, in Appendix J or the rest of the general plan or code changes that says that a road diet is required. I mean, I will say, just from the experience we had with the road diet pop-up project, I mean, I thought that what was most evident was, first of all, the challenge with the intersections when you go to a road diet. All right, cars that had formerly been queuing in two lanes were now queuing in one lane, which meant the line is effectively twice as long, so that led to slowdowns. However, if we change a stop sign to a roundabout or a light, then traffic can continue to move through there quickly, and that addresses the issue. The other problem that I think came up or issue with the, with the road diet is that really that is sort of a road layout for a main street, right? And that's what, there is a map here in the general plan, I believe it was, Chapter Three, that shows, you know, Portola as a main street rather than a corridor where people are moving through. They're going to. But it's not there yet, right? You know, today, there's still large parcels, I mean, including some of them that were rezoning or the public storage or even the site of today Black Pearl, future Portola Plaza project. There's just still large street frontages that don't offer a whole lot of amenities, destination, or homes for people to go to. And so the benefits of a main street road diet, street layout are not, cannot be realized yet, right? Benefits to improve parking or to bike and pedestrian access. I mean, so for those reasons, I'm, I'm agree, we shouldn't rule out the possibility of a road night in the future. I see it's nothing that requires it here, so, I mean, I'm fine leaving the language in. You know, we've, we just resurfaced Portola and striped it for four lanes because that's the reality we have today, and that's what folks wanted in the neighborhood. So I think, you know, we've, we've got the infrastructure we need now and can continue to analyze options going forward. Some of the other sections in Segment J, wasn't as sure about, for example, Capitola Road. It says that we will widen it from two lanes to four lanes. You know, I know, I think we're planning on doing a plotline study of Capitola Road this coming year to really look at the best options there. I mean, presumably, each one of these projects that are called out in Appendix J would come up, and we would actually look at what's best, right? I mean, what are we committing to with these various descriptions of, you know, how we're going to address the roadways in Appendix J?
Maybe I can start off, and then Matt can help with this one. But so Appendix J are the roadway improvements that are included in the project, is, you know, remembering that the general plan is a twenty-year plan, so there's no particular timeframe. But in order to get to the general plan's vision, these are the roadway projects. Most of those projects were included in the general plan before. They've been on the, in the plan for a long, long time, and we're kind of continuing to move them forward. What it, what it does do is it gives us the, kind of the blueprint for what projects might be, we might look for funding for, and what might be included in capital improvement programs in the future. But matter anything wants.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to point out, and so you'll get another shot at it for sure. As we have time and resources, we would do a bit of planning on these projects and then introduce them through the CIP, which is an action item. And then through funding and through, you know, different planning, engineering planning processes, the board will have multiple opportunities to weigh in on, on the ideas that we put that we put forth. So, but that's in essence what Stephanie just said, so just confirming that. Okay, that's, that was my understanding as well, is that these are these highlight corridors and areas and intersections and roadways that we need to look at further that we will put more time and effort into. And we sort of have a best guess at a solution today listed, but it's not necessarily going to be the final solution. That's correct. Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions. If there's no other member of the board that wants to ask questions or make comments at this time, I'll open it for public comment.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is James. So these agenda items 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 have all been condensed to one item. So rather than getting two minutes on each one, I get two minutes for all five? Wow, you know, I used to think I believed in brevity in every aspect of my life except foreplay. This isn't a good example of brevity. This is a better example of brevity. Eighty-five percent of what's in here, and I didn't have time to look at either of my two electrical code checkbooks, but they're like a dictionary. Eighty-five percent of the useful information for a building contractor can be condensed down to 40 pages. So I actually, with some friends' assistance, was looking up some information in the Brown Act, because when I-
Mr. Whitman, we're discussing the sustainability update.
I am, please. Yes. Okay. I spent about five hours looking through this stuff yesterday and I was right across the hall, looking at the public information, looking at the binder. I came up with something that I hadn't seen before, which was when any particular to an item is over 30 pages, it's not, not included. So when I was there in the morning and it was for over two hours, I had some great assistants from some clerks, they were trying to help me find the information, but it couldn't be found. They said they talked to IT. So these five items, on however big the binder is, are only 210 pages. But after I arrived in the afternoon to confirm some stuff, the IT guy was still looking at information, but one of the clerks was very helpful. She told me that she could find it and two friends that I was talking to on the phone could find it. So these five items may only be, add up to 210 pages, but when I looked up last night, it's over 2,104 pages. So I don't think this is being very helpful and transparent to the public. Also that, so I think anyone would have legitimate questions to any of the five. And so I'm putting an objection into all five. And it's just really frustrating. I mean, when I hear the word sustainability, it, to me, it directly relates to totalitarian control. And so I'm just making a note on 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, that a lot of people's guidelines for what they could do is being affected. And I think it could have been presented in a much more concise fashion. I use this as an example. 3,000 pages condensed down to 40, which also have pictures. So even if he didn't speak the English languages, if you could do simple math, you could understand it. This is very challenging.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman. Does anyone else here in Chambers wish to make a comment? Seeing none, is there anyone online?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we do have one speaker online. Judy, your microphone is now available. As a reminder, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself. It appears the speaker is either unable or unwilling to speak. We have no further speakers. Oh, my apologies. We just had someone raise their hand. GCSE, your microphone is now available.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We have spoken to hundreds of people who are on the same page as to supporting the high-density flex housing on Portola Drive. And we cannot think of a better suited parcels and a corridor for a flex high-density housing to combat the housing crisis that we are facing in our community. And we have been, you know, fortunate for Ms. Hanson to be great in communicating with the community members and answer questions. And some people had doubts about some of the issues and she was great at putting these questions to rest and answer them. And furthermore, you know, sometimes, you know, underrepresented and minorities don't show up in these meetings and they're not represented and not very often to have the opportunity and a shot at affordable housing and be a part of the community. And the very organized few opposition sometimes to this type of a developments unintentionally, you know, promotes gated communities without gates. And that creates prejudice and denies the minorities for having these very few opportunities that, you know, come about in our communities from time to time. Thank you. And we ask that the Board of Supervisors to approve this high-density housing. And thank you for, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, GCSE.
Jen, your microphone is now available.
Hi. And I am going to ask real quick, is this where I can make public comment?
It is.
Okay, great. I applaud the work you guys are doing and good morning from Japan. I'm working on some things here. A public comment should be a little bit longer. I kind of agree with the one guy, five minutes at least for so many items, but hey, I'm glad to be able to talk to you guys for a minute. Those are some great proposals. I'm really glad somebody finally let me know that this was all going on because it's not easy to find out about. Anyhow, the code needs to allow, I think, more nonprofits, eco-villages, backyard homes, allow for people to live in community, be less prohibitive, far too much regulations for the average folks, minorities, the disabled, low income, working class, et cetera. So bravo for the focus on making the zoning sensible. I propose more and agree with so much. Real reliable mass transit, including trains and bold solutions, pedestrians, mobility, protecting land, et cetera. Yeah. Rewarding those who put their land in conservation or environmental sustainable use, please, please, please do this. Encourage small farms by allowing zoning that allows it because affordable housing can be served by things like small farms, eco-villages, nonprofit zoning, yada, yada. Reward leaving wildlands on personal property with decreased tax burdens. We need density, but we need wildlife borders if we are not to fragment and unravel our ecosystems. Agree, allow events on rural land for more, encourage landowners to donate space to nonprofits who are struggling massively right now under the current economic changes. Access to parks, public open space is, in residential's areas is good. Proto stands on farms is a relief as the short-sighted inadequacy of smart zoning was showcased by not allowing farm stands on farms. That mean, whoa, guys, weird. Transportation, exceptions to parking, a great idea. It helps a lot. Limit single-use occupant cars, you know? Transportation is going in a good direction. Cheapest way for us all to slow down traffic, though, is to slow down traffic to five to 10 miles an hour in urban areas. That's the cheapest way for all of us to, to, to help with this. Create bike paths and barrier paths, not bike lanes, because no one uses bike lanes, even here in Japan. They're incredibly dangerous. Do you want your kids or elders in them? I don't. So yeah, that's why people don't use them, because they're life threatening. I applaud the differences in the permits to many things such as smaller buildings, sustainable land use. Please amend the building code to allow, see Measure O in Mendocino County, please look this up, to allow more natural growth and sustainability. Acknowledge that primary residences are not commercial and please treat them differently. I can't encourage you enough to do this. I would like to encourage infill, to let the everyday people build, et cetera, et cetera. I'm running out of time. I've got like two more things, but see, that's the thing, three minutes, maybe five, six with so many items would be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
We have no further speakers at this time, Chair.
Then I'll return to the board for deliberation and action.
You need a motion for approval?
You please use your microphone. Thank you so much.
Okay, Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve the recommended actions for numbers 13 through 17. Can we do that in one motion or should we go one by one?
You can do it in one motion.
Okay. Items 13 through 17 is proposed?
Well, second.
All right. Motion by Supervisor McPherson, second by Supervisor Caput, to adopt all the recommended actions from items 13 through 17. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Clerk, roll call that, please.
Supervisor Friend?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
and Koenig?
Aye.
Items 13 through 17 pass unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes our regular meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. The next meeting will be next Tuesday, December 13th at 9:00 AM here in Chambers and online on Zoom. Meeting adjourned.